All right, we're going to get started this morning with an invocation from Pastor John Benefield. Welcome, John.
Thank you. You all bow your head as we go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we confess that we love you and we love this city that you've given to us. Thank you for it and thank you for these wonderful leaders, Lord. Mayor Holt, the City Council and staff, and the thousands of employees of this city of Oklahoma City. You really blessed us richly. We thank you for the transformation that you've given to us. We believe the best is yet to come and we pray that you continue to transform this city that you've given to us. We pray for your kingdom to come and your will to be done here and for wisdom and understanding for all these wonderful leaders. We pray for protection for them and all the inhabitants of the city. We claim the 91st Psalm in effect for each and every one, that your angels have charge o'er us. We pray for prosperity and health for everyone and that each one would know you better every day. May this city's leaders always invite your presence and guidance, for we are dependent upon you. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I call this meeting of the City Council to order and we have a pretty busy office of the mayor. And so here I will make my way to the front and we'll get started. Why don't we start with Open Streets? Who all's here? I know Carrie Blumer with Oklahoma City County Health Department is here and she's got some other folks. Of course, Open Streets has become kind of an exciting tradition here in Oklahoma City the last few years and we want to continue to honor it and we've got one coming up. And to hear more about that, I would ask the clerk to read a proclamation.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City has prioritized the health and well-being of all its residents, and whereas active transportation promotes healthier residents with closer ties to their community, the more residents who choose active transportation, the greater impact we can have on halting the rise of obesity rates. Whereas Open Streets OKC reclaims part of a busy street for a few hours for non-motorized activity, everyone is invited to celebrate the recreational fun at Wiley Post Park and meet local business owners as they walk, bike, skate, or board down South Robinson Avenue to the festive atmosphere of the historic Capitol Hill Business District in Oklahoma City. Whereas Oklahoma City County Health Department and its partners are hosting Open Streets OKC from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM on Sunday, October 7th, from Wiley Post Park down South Robinson Avenue to Southwest 29th Street. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 7th as Open Streets OKC Day in Oklahoma City.
That is exciting. So I attended this in the Capitol Hill area last year and it's a great event and I love that it brings people from all over the city down to that really growing and fascinating part of our city. And I would love to hear any other thoughts you'd like to share. Carrie, you kind of administer this from the City County Health Department, correct? So please introduce yourself and maybe who's joined you here this morning.
Thank you. I'm Carrie Blumer with the City County Health Department and Mrs. Billy and Caleb with Prodigal and they help us put this amazing event on. It's a big event, so we need lots of help. But if any of you have attended Open Streets, you know what it's all about. We were up on Northwest 23rd Street for several years and it was so successful that we decided to bring it down to South Oklahoma City. And we love being in South Oklahoma City. The Health Department is actually building a new facility in South Oklahoma City, so we are very excited to have more of a presence down there. But Open Streets, we closed down South Robinson for about a mile. You can walk, bike, run, bring your dog, bring your stroller. It is completely free. There are about 50 different activities along the route. So it's a very fun day. We're praying for good weather. Sometimes we have good weather, sometimes we don't. So it will happen rain or shine. Yeah.
Very good. Well, let's hear it for all the people who make Open Streets happen. Thank you. This is Bruce Taffey. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, why don't we have the breast cancer awareness folks come forward? And I know that's about half the room, so all of you are welcome. You've come this far, you might as well stand up front. All right, well, we are now coming up on Breast Cancer Awareness Month. At least it's about to be after the clerk reads this proclamation and then we'll hear a little bit more from these folks.
Whereas every two minutes, a woman in the United States is diagnosed with breast cancer. Whereas in Oklahoma, an estimated 2,870 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed among women in 2018 and 530 women will die of the disease. Whereas Susan G. Komen, Central and Western Oklahoma, was founded in 1994 and currently serves 47 counties. Susan G. Komen, Central and Western Oklahoma, has invested over $10 million to local breast care programs and breast cancer research. This investment has helped over 75,000 women and men battling breast cancer. Whereas the Komen mission is to save lives by meeting the most critical needs in our communities and investing in breakthrough research to prevent and ultimately cure breast cancer. Whereas Susan G. Komen, Central and Western Oklahoma, is celebrating the 25th Annual Komen Oklahoma City Race for the Cure on October 20th. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Oklahoma City.
All right, well, thank you. Well, this is a great opportunity to bring awareness to this important issue and great people up here, all focused on that. But we don't have time for all of you to speak, but we do have time for Alyssa to speak. And if you wouldn't mind saying a few words and maybe, I don't know who all, kind of what different sort of groups are represented here, so you might talk a little bit about that as well.
Hello, I'm Alyssa Pope and I'm our events manager for Susan G. Komen, Central and Western Oklahoma. Today we have some of our survivors, breast cancer survivors, as well as some of our Pintai guys and our board members with us this morning as well.
with this proclamation, if the clerk would please read.
And so this is our 25th annual race and since 1994, because of the city, we've been able
Whereas the month of October is designated in the United States as National Disability
to help women, as you see here, be able to provide mammograms and assistance with their treatment.
Employment Awareness Month.
And so we thank you all for all of your support over the 25 years and hope to see you all
Whereas as the newly-elected mayor and the City Council of the city of Oklahoma City
out in October.
Excellent.
are implementing a broad ordinance requiring ADA accessibility sidewalks on all new and
Well, let's show our appreciation to everybody who fights breast cancer here in our city.
renovated major and minor arterial streets in addition to fulfilling the citizens-approved
Thank you all very much. Thank you. You don't have to stay, you're more than welcome to.
ADA accessible MAPS-3 projects and infrastructure.
Okay, now if the other half of the room would come forward for Disability Awareness Month.
Whereas Oklahoma City's Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, coordinator Keith Wilkinson
I think that's, looks like this group over here.
and staff work daily to ensure that the city's programs and facilities are accessible to
Yeah.
all and to implement the city's ADA transition plan. Whereas our city needs the knowledge, skills, talent, and productivity of all of our citizens with disabilities to help build our city and energize our economy. Members of the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns appreciate the new plaque installed at City Hall honoring people with disabilities. And whereas the theme for this year is 2018 Barrier Free for You and Me. Whereas on October 25th, the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns will host the 28th Annual Awards Luncheon to honor outstanding people with disabilities and persons and entities that support their well-being. The festivities will also honor area student poster artists by displaying their artwork created to help raise awareness of the progress for people with disabilities. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Disability Awareness Month and Thursday, October 25th, as Special Disability Awareness Day in Oklahoma City. And he urges its observance by all citizens as a reminder that people with disabilities can learn, work, pay taxes, buy goods and services, be self-supporting, and lead others if given the opportunity.
All right, well, thank you. Well, for a lot of people, including myself in Oklahoma City, the face of the disability community in Oklahoma City has and maybe always will be Pam Henry. And yesterday she had, what I understand, some very serious medical procedures and so she was certainly in our thoughts and prayers this morning. But I thought I would also ask you to say a few words and maybe kind of talk a little bit about the committee. One of the fun parts of being mayor is that you suddenly get to work with this outstanding and longstanding Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns.
My name is Sidna Madden. I am the chairperson for the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns and have been now for five or six years, I'm not even sure for how long. My predecessor was Pam Henry, as he mentioned. I'm only the fifth chairperson in 67 years of the mayor's committee being around, so it's quite a title to hold. I am flanked by other members of the committee, part of our executive committee, as well as just the committee members. We have a great group of people that come to the table every month representing different disabilities, representing different businesses. We come to the table and solve some of Oklahoma City's problems that our community members bring to us in regards to accessibility. And as the mayor mentioned and as was read in the proclamation, on October 25th, we have our Mayor's Awards Luncheon that any and everybody is invited to. We give out nice awards that day, as well as we have an ADA special session that runs all day long, where we invite architects, engineers, building facility managers, ADA coordinators such as Keith. We have people coming from out of state this year. We have a national speaker who is going to give our presentation for us and people can get continuing ed credits for it. So if you're interested in that, please, please, please contact one of us and let us know. Come to our awards luncheon, see what we're all about. Our great mayor here is going to be there giving out some wonderful awards. Thank you.
All right, let's show our appreciation to everybody that helps the people with disabilities in our city. All right, why don't we have Dwight Kunkel come forward? Did I pronounce that correctly, Dwight?
Yes.
Very good. Pending the results of this resolution, Dwight, you might be the teacher of the month and we are honored to have you here at Oklahoma, at City Hall today. Let's learn a little bit more about you. I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Dwight Kunkel has been named Teacher of the Month for September 2018 by Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Dwight is a proud graduate of several universities. He initially attended Heidelberg College, where he received a Bachelor of Music degree. He attended the University of Kentucky and received his Master of Music Education while also completing his Ashbury Seminary Music Course work. And in 2000, he graduated from Southwestern Christian University with a Master of Ministry degree. Whereas Dwight is in his 23rd year of teaching, his seventh year in the Oklahoma City Public Schools, and he is in his fourth year at Horace Mann Elementary as their vocal music teacher. Whereas Dwight has had many meaningful experiences throughout his life and career: teacher, principal, composer, writer, worship leader, pastor, missions volunteer, consultant, and clinician. Whereas Dwight regularly tells his students that they are beautiful and powerful. He wants them to believe it, know it, see it for themselves, and in one another. Whereas Dwight considers it a privilege to sit down one-on-one with a troubled student. Speaking worth and identity to them, he finds that it is often the child who acts out in class who accomplishes something creative and unexpected, especially when one believes in that child and they are there for him. Whereas one of Dwight's greatest joys as a teacher is watching his students teach one another, whether song or instrument. When he hears his students sing, he sees more than elementary students. He envisions heroes, coaches, teachers, soldiers, nurses, mothers, and fathers, people who will make a positive difference in the lives of others. Whereas Dwight believes that the elements for being a dynamic teacher are to consistently learn, grow, and serve with a positive attitude. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Dwight Kunkel on his selection as the September 2018 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now I'm going to ask Dwight to say a few words, but maybe we'll handle a little bit of business first. I believe Horace Mann would be in Ward 2, correct? Would you like to make a motion? Okay. Got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Why don't you cast your votes? Passes unanimously. Thank you for all your service and congratulations on being the Teacher of the Month. We would love to hear a few words from you, Mr. Kunkel.
Thank you. I'd like to know who wrote that introduction. I want to say thank you, Mayor Holt, members of the City Council, and all the honored guests here this morning. It is a great privilege. I think I have one of the greatest jobs in the world, really. Our principal is here this morning. We have a wonderful school and we could not accomplish what we accomplished without the support and the community working together, as has been displayed already here this morning. When I was called to work six, seven years ago on a weekend saying, "Would you come in and be a sixth-grade teacher for us?" Because we weren't able to hire anyone, I said, "Sure, I can do that." And I walked in Monday morning, first day of school, there were no textbooks, the children were sitting at art tables, we had no desks. And I pretty quickly found out about Donors Choose and the Oklahoma City Foundation. And I watched the magic begin when a family, a community, works together as a family. And through Donors Choose, Oklahoma City Foundation, Rotary Club, we've been able to accomplish many things. So I know I represent thousands of dedicated and excellent gifted teachers here in the city. It is a privilege to be a part of their company and to be here this morning and be honored. So thank you very much. We know God loves our city and you, like I say to my students, you are beautiful and powerful and you're working together to make this city more beautiful and to empower people. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. And here, this is yours to keep. All right, that concludes my business up here. I will go back to my seat. All right, we are now still in office of the mayor. We are now at Item 3B, Notification of Mark K. Stonecypher to serve as Vice Mayor for the six-month period beginning October 9th. A notification, that's my first one of those. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll take a motion then.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You will be the Vice Mayor, Mark.
This place might never be the same.
Now we have Items C through E, which are appointments. We have appointment of J.D. Baker to the Lake Otocah, appointment of Regina Banks to Mary Gardens Foundation, and appointments of Matt Hinkle and Asa Highsmith to the Planning Commission. I believe we can take those as a group, can we not? All right, I would entertain a motion?
I move.
Got a motion and a second. And I should say, there are many more to come. Didn't have as much time the last two weeks to work on appointments as I did maybe the previous two weeks, so the list isn't three pages long this time, but there's more to come. And also, I know it's of interest to some, including a gentleman in the front row here, Mr. Groves. I did receive a name for Award VII Planning Commissioner yesterday and I expect to have that appointment on the next agenda as well. So with that, any discussion on the appointments, Items C through E? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now that brings us to an item of great regret, and that is 3F, Resolution, Accepting Letter of Retirement of James D. Couch, effective January 2nd, 2019. This might be a time, there'll be others, I expect, but this might be a time for a few comments. I, this is our first, obviously, public meeting since the news of this broke about eight days ago. And I think we had believed after a while that you'd be here forever, but we know in our hearts that can't be the case. But we are ever grateful to your incredible run of service in our city, not just as 18 years as city manager, but all of the things you did even previous to that. And I just think there's no question, you're the best city manager in the country right now, maybe the best city manager in our city's history. I'm not to judge, but you're certainly the longest-serving and there's something to be said for that. And we will definitely miss you and, but we certainly, I think, I speak for everybody when I say we wish you all the best as you embark on this. Of course, we do have a few more months with you, so again, this isn't the last time to say nice things about you, but if anybody else wants to take the opportunity, it's certainly now's the time, now is the moment. James, we'll just go around.
Yeah. Your legacy will be felt within this organization and within the whole city for decades. And I could go on and on and on, but I think that's the biggest thing that I can say about your 18 years as city manager.
I think there will be tons of things that could be talked about, but the history books, I think, will reflect on securing the city's access to water first and foremost, 50 years from now, 75 years from now. I think that, I mean, we talk about things like bringing the thunder here and, I mean, things that are transformative, but that's got to be 50, 100 times more important. Teams can come and go, they can go to other cities, but what you've done for the people, future generations for securing water, I think as water becomes more scarce through this century, people will reflect back on what you've done. And I've never felt so confident as when you were leading those negotiations and making all that happen. I think that's, to me, that's the most important legacy.
It's been a privilege to serve on the council with you as the city manager, Mr. Couch. And I think the legacy that you leave as far as character and integrity and vision will be one that will benefit us for generations to come. God bless you.
Thanks for everything you've done for this city over the course of 16 years. That's pretty amazing. But I think the legacy for part of us can be measured in the fact that when we start trying to talk about finding a replacement, you've raised that bar so high for us that it's going to be a challenge. So thank you.
Jim, you've certainly been a very, very, very important component of the growth and success the city has experienced the last 18-plus years. And I think you also serve as a great example of why the city manager council form of government works so well to shift the responsibility of operating the city to an individual like you and the success that you'll have by doing so and letting us stay clear of the day-to-day operations certainly is one that I'm sure government textbooks will use as a great example for this form of government. Thank you.
Thank you, David, but I must point out, it's the council manager form of government. The manager does not come first. I'm pretty clear about that.
We'll do that till his last day. Yes, and I'm always corrected when I use that term and thank you.
Because the hardest job we're going to have is trying to figure out how to fill this position. Jim, it's been an honor for these years, 10 years for me, to be able to serve with you. It has been an amazing renaissance in the city and you've led it for us and I appreciate it. I said, "I don't think a single day has gone by since the word came out two Mondays ago, I guess, that people haven't stopped me every place I go, the grocery store, the street, that saying, 'What are you going to do? How are you going to fill his shoes? How are we going to, you know, how's the city going to move forward?'" And we're going to move forward, but it's, the shoes to fill are gigantic and we appreciate so much everything you've done.
Mr. Couch, for all of this time that I have served on City Council has been an extreme pleasure. Not only have I known you through council, but I've known you through many contentious and turbulent times as well. And you have always proven yourself to be a man of honor, courage, integrity. Your legacy in this city will remain. I pray your continued prosperity and that things would be well.
Mr. Couch, it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. I have learned so much from you about the city and even though you're going to retire, I have your cell phone number and I'm going to keep calling you, so I'll keep learning.
Is that a city cellphone?
It is.
Mark, you're going to have to get a new number.
Most importantly, I'd like to say this and I mean this with all due respect, I cherish the fact that I can call you and Kathy friends and that means more to me than anything. God bless.
Thank you. I'm not leaving today. I just wanted, I'm going to be here for a while more, but I do want to thank you all. You know, one of the reasons I'm able to have served for 18 years is, number one, the quality of people we have on City Council. There's nobody here that's trying to do things for themselves. Everybody's goal is to make this city better. And, you know, we don't always agree on all issues, but by golly, we agree on that goal. Not only have I known you through council, but I've known you through many contentious and turbulent times as well. And you have always proven yourself to be a man of honor, courage, integrity. Your legacy in this city will remain. I pray your continued prosperity and that things would be well.
Mr. Couch, it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. I have learned so much from you about the city, and even though you're going to retire, I have your cellphone number and I'm going to keep calling you. So, I'll keep learning.
Is that a city cellphone?
It is.
Mark, you're going to have to get a new number.
Most importantly, I'd like to say this, and I mean this with all due respect, I cherish the fact that I can call you and Kathy friends, and that means more to me than anything. God bless.
Thank you. I'm not leaving today. I'm going to be here for a while more, but I do want to thank you all. You know, one of the reasons I'm able to have served for 18 years is, number one, the quality of people we have on city council. There's nobody here that's trying to do things for themselves. Everybody's goal is to make the city better. And, you know, we don't always agree on all issues, but by golly, we agree on that goal, and I think that's really important. The business community's been great, and then the team of professionals that we have at this city has been fabulous. And so, I've been blessed with the great people to work with and given very nice opportunities over the last number of years. Thank you all very much.
Well, I know no one wants to do it, but somebody's going to have to make a motion to adopt the resolution accepting Mr. Couch's letter of retirement.
Maybe we don't have to.
Let the man retire. Who would do it, understanding it is regretfully delivered?
I knew James would do it. Unique courage.
All right, did I hear a second?
Yes.
All right, very good. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the resolution accepting Mr. Couch's letter of retirement? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item 3G under the office of the mayor, and that's a discussion regarding said retirement, and more specifically, the process for hiring a new city manager. I might throw out a few discussion points to kind of frame things, and then we can take it whichever direction you want to go. But to remind you, as we just adopted, Mr. Couch is definitely not here any longer than January 2nd, 2019. His letter did indicate an interest in sort of minimizing his day-to-day activities around Thanksgiving. And sometimes he jokes with me that he can leave at any time, but I'm pretty sure we're not going to take him up on that offer. But that does give us a couple of months. I think there's a few decision points to discuss here. You know, if we were simply filling the job immediately, which from my anecdotal experiences with you was how it was done 18 years ago, I think that would have kind of happened already. I mean, I think that we seem to be, it seems to be self-evident that we're headed towards a process. Where will we seek out a pool of applicants? And so, if that is in fact the case, we need to discuss here today, you know, how long we wish to list the job, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, five weeks. We need to discuss here today, you know, whether we, what networks we may try to pursue to make sure that vacancy is well-known around the country and not just internally and not just in Oklahoma City. And I think we probably need to discuss here today whether we would seek the professional assistance of outsiders, or whether we would, at least for the time being, work just with our own personnel department on these issues. So, those seem to me the decision points, but if you have others to offer, I certainly invite that as well. And for that, I kind of open it up for comments, discussion, direction.
I believe we'll receive applicants from all over the United States, because of the great things that have happened here under Mr. Couch's leadership. I also believe that we have five or six very talented people within this organization, this city, that would make fine candidates and fine applicants. And so, I don't want to delay this and have it go on months and months with a national search firm. I would like to try to at first do it with our own people, personnel, by the way. And from there, if we need to take another avenue or another venue, let's talk about it. But I would rather this be a shorter process than a longer process. Thank you.
I agree with Councilman Stonecypher. That sums up my thoughts really well.
I likewise agree with this, Mr. Mark Stonecypher. I think we have some excellent people of character and capability on our staff, and I think we should start looking at them and then go from there if we have to.
Given this city's position and the fact that this city has been positioned for growth, I think that it is crucially important that we not necessarily limit ourselves, even though we've got qualified people certainly on staff. I think it needs to be a national search, and the networks that are available to us would at least allow us an opportunity to look, you know, elsewhere as well as internally. And then, take about five weeks to do that process, I think would be sufficient time. You don't have to draw it out, and I know we would like to have somebody in place as soon as we possibly can, but five weeks or so would give to us an opportunity to kind of also look at a search that would be inclusive and not exclusive.
To that point, Mr. Couch, if we might draw upon your expertise for a moment, there are city manager associations, right?
Yes.
What are some examples of that?
Well, the International City Managers Association is a large one. They do online postings, so it could be done very quickly at that organizations. There's also some informal groups. There's a large city managers executive forum that I've been a member of for a number of years, and that would be a good place also to get a notice out.
Okay.
Mayor, I would, my preference would be to find someone internally, mainly just to continue the success that Mr. Couch has demonstrated, and hopefully, we have individuals here within the city that have grown and developed under his leadership, and we could see a continuation of that leadership. However, I do think, as you've mentioned, it's wise to let other city managers be aware of this, just in case there is an interest. I think personally, it would take an extremely favorable candidate to override, you know, the internal ones that we have already, but you never know. I would also ask if we could, one, get Mr. Couch's input as to not necessarily the amount of time, but the level of importance for the various duties he performs. And what I mean by that is relationships and development of staff, you know, compared with activities in terms of development related to economic development, social issues, all the various demands on his time. Help us gain a perspective, because, I mean, I don't know, we kind of stay away from the day-to-day operations, as to what are the important aspects of that job. And then, maybe from that, we could also get some input from those who are impacted by those various levels of, or the various components of his job. Get some input from those people that come into contact in that respect. So, it would just help us have a better understanding of what's required of his job when we ultimately have to make that decision.
Thank you.
David, I think you make a very good point in that regard, and one of the things that I think we'll need to do is develop a job description, sort of a mission statement that we'll use to go out and advertise this job. There is the opportunity always to look at a national search firm. We've done a little work in that regard, and I believe at this point that internally, we can run a search process just as efficiently. So, I would agree with the council that an internal search is a good way to do it.
An internally-run search.
An internally-run search, with a search committee appointed or selected. I do think for the benefit of the candidate, and I've talked about this a little bit, I think for the benefit of the candidate, doing a full-fledged search rather than just making an appointment is the right thing to do. At the end of the day, you know, it gives the confidence to not only those that have selected the person, but to the candidate, that they were the best fit for the job. So, I really think we should, you know, formalize the process to the best we can. There is a proven formula, really, for doing a search like this, with, you know, a request that goes out for candidates to apply, applications, cover letters, questions that would be asked of all the candidates. But we certainly, I believe, have the capability of doing that internally.
Okay. I think it's important to remember that this is a unique position. There are not a lot of cities our size or bigger that have council manager forms of government. I mean, there would be a limited number. Most would have a strong mayor form of government, once you get to our size or bigger. So, this really is, I know Jim likes to joke about unfettered power, but it is one of the most powerful unelected positions in the state, I believe. When you look at the budget and the 4,500, 5,000 employees, I mean, it is tremendous responsibility. And I just can't imagine doing that without, I mean, you know, you may know who the internal candidate is, but you don't know who's out there in the country. And you're not going to know that without an aggressive national search. There's no, it's basically a CEO position, and there's no corporation of our size or anything close to it that wouldn't do a national search, that wouldn't ask for assistance in getting the word to all the city managers and assistant city managers, and maybe even those in the private sector that would be capable. Two points. I mean, one is that you're already seeing, you know, it's not just that the candidate would feel like they were the best candidate, it was formalized, it's that the public would have confidence. Because you're already seeing, like on OKC Talk and public discussions, that there are a few very powerful people in the city, they always get what they want at city hall, and they've already picked their successor. Right? So, those discussions are out there. So, when we start saying things today like, well, we have internal candidates and we don't need to do a national search, I mean, it just feeds into that, that the person's already been picked. And I just, I want to discourage that. And the way you would discourage that, and for the public to have confidence, is to do an aggressive, very formalized search. The second thing is that search needs to be in, with maximum transparency, out in the open, not private phone calls, not small meeting groups. I mean, it needs to be here, like we're doing right now. This is beautiful. This is what we're supposed to be doing. And this, Kenny, is what the Attorney General has actually opined, correct? I mean, the Attorney General has opined about city manager process and its need to be public and...
You can interview or review applications in executive session, but you can't have a general discussion about, say, the process like you're doing now in executive session.
So, these kind of discussions about how we want to, this needs to be discussed here, not...
Right, yes.
Okay.
David, you know, for the benefit of all the candidates involved, and I agree with you that we need to throw a very broad net and be sure that we're reaching candidates across the country, many of those candidates are likely to be working currently.
Right.
And so, we cannot, in a public forum, you know, discuss names or any of those sorts of things until we're much further along in the process.
And those names and interviews, we can do in executive session. Just the process and how we reach out to them and how we might go about deciding needs to be here.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other thoughts? I'll say what it sounds like I'm hearing is a internally-operated search process. It doesn't foreclose the idea of outside help at some point, if for some reason we feel that's necessary, but it sounds like today, using our personnel department as our staff, listing the position, maybe listing it for four weeks?
Five or six weeks, I think, Mr. Mayor, gives sufficient time for people to consider everything involved and be able to make a process, to move through the process.
Okay. Yeah. I'd like to ask Jim, like, I mean, I'm sure you've gotten, you've been solicited over the years, or, I mean, whoever this candidate would be, like Meg said, has a job, they may have a family, I mean, they can't just pick up and quit that, I mean, there would be a lot of thought that would go into that. So, if you were trying to do, how would you get the word out to potentially qualified people across the country? What avenues would you use? Would you go through the city manager association? Would you...
Well, first of all, my guess is the word's out a little bit at this point in time. But yes, the International City Managers Association is clearly the number-one place to advertise for these type of jobs. They have online advertisements, so that can be done fairly quickly. There's City Managers Association of Oklahoma, that would be a good place to do, which is a subset of the International City Managers Association. And then, again, there's a large city managers forum that I've been involved with that can help get the word out to the larger communities out there, more of our poorer cities. I would think those would be the three places you'd want to start.
Okay. Do you have a sense of how many cities our size or bigger have council manager forms of government?
Mayor Holt, I discussed that yesterday. Yeah, we're about 10, I think, in size. Larger cities would include Phoenix, a couple in California, San Jose in California. In Texas, you've got Austin, Fort Worth, Dallas, San Antonio, Kansas City, Charlotte, North Carolina, Cincinnati, but I think Cincinnati's smaller. So, you know, we're probably in around, you know, somewhere in the 9, 10 range, 11, 12, somewhere in there.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, let me ask you a quick question. That kind of covers city managers' networks, I think, but what about perhaps some corporate CEOs who may be interested? I mean, how would that word get out, Meg, or how would that word get out, Jim?
You know, that's more difficult. You know, if you're going across disciplines, there's a lot of different areas that you can go into. And if you're going to be looking specifically to go outside of city government expertise, then I think you may need to have some outside help do that, because that is not an area where we have historically recruited.
But we do reach out to the community at large. You know, as we said, the word is out in Oklahoma City, and I think people are beginning to inquire, but we can post on our own website, the job posting, we can post on other job boards. But, you know, we are really going to focus, I think, on the experience of a city manager with this type of...
I'm sure there are exceptions to the rule, but from my experience, that most of the larger city managers, the hires that I've seen over the last 20 years, generally have government experience. But again, I'm sure there's some exceptions to that.
I'm guessing that the majority of the people who are interested in this job already know about it, already know about the opening. So, I would push more towards a quicker timeframe, like a three or four week rather than a six week.
James, I would agree with you. I think four weeks is probably a reasonable compromise, because getting the word out and having an initial submission of interest is just one tiny piece of the process. The entire process takes a reasonably long time, but we want to see what the pool looks like to start with, and then, whatever group it is, will narrow that pool down to candidates...
Yeah, and to clarify, the weeks we're talking about is how long you can put in your application. The end of that period is the day you can no longer apply, in theory.
I vehemently disagree that someone already knows that the job is available. I think you have to post it so that people will know that the job is available, and I think that takes time. And I don't believe that four weeks is sufficient amount of time to get the word out nationally for someone in Charlotte or wherever else someone could be. If certainly people who are here know that Mr. Couch is retiring, but that, I don't know there's national news for people who might be interested. And I just think you need more time to be able to do that. I don't think you need to draw it, drag it out to really, you know, more than five or six weeks, but I just think the less amount of time, the narrower the window, the less the, broad the net is. And I just think that we need more time as a city. It's a crucial decision that we're making as a city, and I just think we need more time to be able to do that. That's my personal...
I agree. This is an extremely important decision. It's the most important decision I'm going to make on the council, so...
James, I think everybody agrees that it's an important decision, but I think we have to look with what we're dealing with. Mr. Couch won't be here after Thanksgiving, and so if we were to say, applications need to be here by October 31, that's a five-week window that people can make the decision whether or not they want to apply, and then that would give us, say, up to four weeks to review, discuss, interview, and come up with a decision by the first of December. Now, we don't have to have a decision made by the first of December. We can continue to use assistant city managers. Until that time, I just think five weeks to accept applications, I mean, I don't know of a job that goes beyond five weeks to seek out applications. And then, up to a month, maybe it takes longer, to go through the review, interview, discussion process, and then we're at the first week of December.
So, my preference really would be to use more of that time to review and interview and discuss candidates. If we post these positions by the end of this week on these various sites, we'll have immediate response. I mean, we don't have to, you know, this has been my career for 20-plus years, and in the old days, we had to run ads in the newspaper. So, you had to write an ad, you had to get it in the newspaper, you had... Today, we use job boards and electronic means, and that information is out instantaneously. So, the... So the turnaround time for people to apply for the position will be quick. It's the time, I believe, that we all need to carefully vet and review because, as James says and others, this is truly the most important job I think any of us will do regardless of how long we've served on this council.
So are you comfortable with four or five weeks? Or do you want something shorter?
Well...
I'm already five weeks of confidence.
Let me, let me throw out one other fact that's kind of important. When we meet, and we meet November 6th, we don't meet November 13th. So once, because I think pretty quickly after we close, we're going to want to have probably an executive session and talk about who's applied. And so one thought would be, and it's, it's kind of four and a half weeks, Councilman Cooper, would be to close it on November 1st. But that's the last day you can apply. That's a Thursday, 5:00, November 1st. And then that gives kind of a few days over the weekend until Tuesday morning for personnel to kind of sort through it and give us, give us the applications maybe at the, in an executive session on the Tuesday, November 6th meeting.
And we can always have a special meeting of the council if...
We could conceivably do that. I mean, I'm trying to avoid that, but that's obviously always an option. So that is, that's a full month and, and the rest of this week, and I think we could get this posted within a couple of days. So it's kind of four and a half weeks. Think you could live with that. But it also times well with our council meeting November 6th. Does that sound, which also, by the way, is, I think is your last council meeting. So I would hate for you to miss this, the first discussion, Councilman Cooper. If we go past November 1st...
Well, that's why we need to do it earlier.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If we go past November...
That's really why we need the first one.
If we go any farther, then we wouldn't be able to discuss it at the November 6th meeting. And we'd either be looking at November 20th or a, or a special meeting if we want to get, dig in any earlier.
Mayor, I, I like that idea. I do think that's five weeks though, as opposed to four.
Well, you...
I mean, it's not worth discussing.
One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, you're right. That is five weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're getting what you want.
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Countdown.
So, so we post every vacancy, you know, obviously that occurs in the city. And so there's no need, this is really just a discussion to give personnel and the city manager some guidance. There's, there's no need to vote to post a vacancy. We, that is just automatic city procedure. We're really just trying to give you some direction. And you can, you can help us, if you don't mind, by directing personnel to do as it seems like we have, we have come to a consensus about.
And Mayor, if I could add on to that, help Jim, if you would help craft what that posting looks like a little bit with some of the...
The Personnel Director and I will get together and put together a posting and run that past council. And then we'll also let you know the timelines and the procedures for getting it in, in front of various websites and postings.
Great.
Yes. Like, when people would call you over the years, who would, who would call you? Like, city managers or mayors or...
Yeah, never, never a mayor, but, but...
That's really beneath that.
No, yeah. There are, there are firms that do this. And sometimes it'd be firms, sometimes it would be people within that organization themselves, or sometimes it would be other city managers letting them, you know, did you know this position was open? Of course, I was never interested in any position in the last 80...
I, I will say, in my last stint here at the city, he was getting calls like every week from, from other, from other cities. So the firms that would call you, like, what, what, which, is there, is there, how many firms would do that? Are there firms that specialize this?
Yeah, Ed, we, we actually have a list of firms that do specialize specifically in placing city managers and municipal employees. You know, one of the things we haven't talked about is it's extremely expensive.
How much?
Well, typically 30% of the annual salary. And that, you know, that requires us going out for an RFP, process-wise, and that's a couple of week process right there to select a firm.
At least.
As we've reviewed the, you know, what they'll do for us, we do this every day internally in the city. We've got great capability and we've got good leadership around this horseshoe to be able to manage the process. I mean, there are some very tried and true specific ways that you manage a search.
And, and we would have the capability internally to call city managers and assistant city managers across the country like a firm would?
Well, we certainly would, but posting on this city managers, International City Managers Association website is effectively reaching that pool of candidates.
But it's not, it's not the same, when you post something on a website, it's not the same as calling someone and saying, "We'd like to, like you to know about this opportunity and why we think that you might want to consider..."
Well, I think, like, I mean, for example, I, I plan to call the leaders of all these groups that he just described and say, "Who's your, who's, who's the hottest shots out there?" You know, "I'd like to know." I assume those are known quantities. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll encourage people to apply, just, just to have choices, you know?
Ed, there's also an informal network. I mean, if you think in terms of potential candidates at the cities that Mr. Couch mentioned, given the size of those cities and the size of our city and, and the network of executives, not just within government, but within private industry, there's going to be discussions about this position, Ed. I have no concern that we will not receive a level of interest that's quite high. But again, in my opinion, I think bringing a person from an outside organization and having them have the ability to quickly mesh into the culture of our city's culture is challenging. It's, it's rare. And I take exception to your point about large companies doing searches. Many, many of the CEOs are, are found from within the organization and, and they're promoted upwards. I hate to use an example as, as, well, I better not use the word trivial, but just look down at OU last year when a very successful coach decided to retire. I mean, they didn't look, they hired within. And whether or not that's going to be successful, I guess it still remains to be seen. But it, it is not uncommon to hire within. That culture and the ability to work well with the staff you have in place is, is critical.
And which is why I believe this hybrid that we're talking about of, of doing a national search so that we have the ability to measure all of the candidates across the same information. You know, when you, we were just talking about how you, how you minimize internal bias. Well, you know, you post a job application and then while we're waiting for the applications to come in, we craft a list of eight questions that are all extremely relevant to the job. And those questions are asked of every successful candidate that we decide to bring in for a search by the same group of people so that everybody, you know, is asked the question and everybody gets to hear the way the candidate responds to that so that we're all dealing with the same facts and the same information. It's not, you know, it's very transparent, to use your word.
When you put these job postings, do you discuss salary and benefits or that comes later?
It can come in either place, but I don't think we need to post the salary. I think we just want to get candidates interested. And then we'll have to, you know, one of the hardest things is reviewing that first pass. But we'll get people that rise to the top very quickly. And then, you know, we'll be able to decide as a group, how many of those people do we want to bring in to interview? You know, do we want to talk to 10 people? Do we want to talk to six people? Do we, you know, how do you begin to narrow that funnel down? And you can do that with scoring sheets. I mean, it can be very simple to do, but it's the work that goes into setting up all the criteria and against what things do we measure. But, you know, you basically use your committee as a screener and everybody reads the information that's submitted. I mean, typically, you're going to submit a cover letter and you're going to submit a resume. And there may be more that we decide we want to ask for. Everybody on the search committee would be asked to read all of that material and rank the candidates. And that's sort of a mathematical thing, once the candidates are ranked. You know, we make a decision, do we want to see X numbers, you know, we've just said. And then we do a round of interviews with that group. And you typically are going to narrow that down to one or two or maybe three finalists. And then you're, you know, likely to do a second round and announce a finalist. But that's, that's where the time, the time is invested upfront, creating the data sets that we want to look at, and then in the interview process.
Okay.
But this is where, you know, I'm in complete agreement that we want our internal candidates and any external candidates that rise to that same level have an opportunity to be measured equally so that there isn't any question if an internal candidate is selected, that that candidate was held up against the finest national pool that we had, and that was the decision that we made. And I, so, you know, I've recently been involved at OCU. And, you know, that search was not dissimilar to that. They did end up with a local candidate, but it was not because there weren't fantastic candidates from all over the country. This was just the, you know, the best choice for the situation.
Okay. Everybody feel comfortable with, with the direction that the city manager and the personnel department will leave here with today? Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll see how it develops. And we'll, we'll revisit this as necessary in the meetings ahead. All right. Moving on to item four, Journal of Council Proceedings, A and B. We can take those with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And we've got requests for uncontested continuances. And there was a little bit of a switcheroo here. The original agenda as distributed, deferred item 9I. That item will, the vote on that item will actually probably end up being deferred, just do notice. But, but there will be discussion on it today. But it was actually supposed to be 9K. A later notice was distributed that identified 9K as being deferred. And then 9AC1D is being struck. And then that was, that was properly noticed from the beginning. And then...
And that's dockless vehicles.
No, that, I'm talking about, I'm talking about whatever that...
It's a claim.
A claim, yeah. No, the, the dockless vehicles is 9K. That will be discussed at 10-9. And then 9I will be discussed today, but I anticipate a vote will not occur today. And then in addition to those two slash three items, is anything that you would like to share?
Just one this morning on page 24, item 9T1, 9T1P, 215 Southwest 23rd Street West. If that'd be struck, the owner has secured.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moving on to revocable permits. 6A, revocable permit with Arc Pyrotechnics for the 2018 Dell Family Day Fireworks Display on October 23rd. Is there anyone here signed up to speak?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Salier, this item is 6A under revocable permits on top of page two, and it is in your ward?
Yes, it is. Fireworks along the river are always exciting. I would move approval.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 6B, revocable right-of-way use permit with Red Coyote Running and Fitness to hold the Red Coyote Run Toberfest 5K on October 21st. Councilwoman Salier.
Yep, this is in Ward 6. Is there anybody here that wants to speak about this event? Please come forward.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Good morning, Mayor Holt, members of City Council. My name is Sarah Bensinger and I live at 4364 Wayland Loop, Tinker Air Force Base. And I'm here to talk about the Run Toberfest. And it is going to be held October 21st, it's a Sunday, and it will start probably at 4:00 PM. And it is an annual 5K that will start and finish right in front of Fassler Hall. It runs through and around the Midtown area. And it is a family-friendly event. It actually benefits a, the Girls on the Run of Oklahoma City, which is a program that provides scholarships for children, girls, in the elementary school. And it gives them the opportunity to participate in these running programs in the community. That would help to, you know, build self-esteem, confidence. So proceeds from the event will go towards that program.
Is 5K enough to run off all the calories in a bratwurst?
Yes. Well, maybe, it depends on how, how fast you go.
How fast you go. I would move appro...
Yep.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we're at 6C, revocable right-of-way use permit with St. Francis of Assisi Church and Rosary School to hold Rosary and St. Francis Oktoberfest on October 7th, Kentucky, between 18th and 19th. Councilwoman.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would move approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 6D, revocable right-of-way use permit with the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation to hold Race for the Cure on October 20th. Obviously, we heard a little bit about that earlier this morning. Councilwoman Salier.
Would you like to come say anything further?
If you wouldn't mind restating your name and address this time. Thank you.
Good morning. Again, I'm Alisa Pope and I live at 11913 Whitney Way, Oklahoma City. So again, I'm here just to talk about the Race for the Cure on October the 20th. As you know, it's our 25th race and it will go through the streets of downtown Oklahoma City. We actually start right out here at Bicentennial Park and, and right in front of City Hall, October 20th. But it's our 25th. And last year, we were able to raise over $600,000 from the race and give back $400,000 to the community for breast cancer research, education, treatment assistance. And this year, we hope to do the same.
Well, we so much appreciate the 25 years that you've been doing this for us.
It's been, it's been something to see, just going back through all the years of where we started in 1994 and where we are today. So it's amazing.
The dollars raised for breast cancer research are amazing. So thank you for what you do. I would move approval.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes item six. We'll now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A, B, C, D, and E under this agenda, and we can take them as a group.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. We will adjourn the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Find ourselves now on the written agenda at page four. We'll convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have items A, B, C, and D here, and we can take them as a group.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. We will adjourn the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we only have claims and payroll, which we may or may not have to vote on, but let's do it anyways.
Move the items.
I'll take a motion. Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. We will adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council meeting, where we find ourselves at the top of page five with the consent docket, item seven. And I know that we do have a presentation on item M, correct? We have a presentation on item AH.
Yes.
We have a presentation on item AK.
That's correct, those three.
And is there anything else that council members would like to pull out and discuss?
First of all, I would move that as item subject to individual consideration.
I don't know what we'll do when you're not here anymore, Meg, for that motion. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
Z1 and AI. AI.
7K. And I'll probably comment on Z1 as well.
C1. Oh, oh, I got that. Okay, I'm sorry. What was the other thing, Council?
7K.
7K, okay. Okay. Well, we'll take them in order. And I think that means we'll start with C1, which I believe was your request, pricing agreement, award and approval, Craftmaster Hardware?
Uh, no.
Did you say, or maybe I misheard.
I said Z.
Z, oh, Z is in zebra.
Yes. I didn't call you Sunday.
Once I read the item, it sounded a little odd, I'll be honest with you.
It was a long agenda. There's a lot to read.
Z.
Z is the sky dance bridge.
All right, all right. Then, then table that for a moment. That's not the first thing up. Okay, first thing up, K1, Neighborhood Alliance?
That's still me, Neighborhood Alliance. I just really wanted to thank the staff for working with the Neighborhood Alliance. We had a couple of weeks ago when we voted to approve the contract neg... We had, a couple of weeks ago, when we voted to approve the contract negotiation, we had a little bit of a timing difference, and the contract ended, I think, at the end of the fiscal year, and yet they continued to provide services, and so staff was able to work that out, and I'm very grateful for their help.
Okay, great, thank you. That brings us to item M, which is a presentation from Robbie.
Yes, Robbie Kinsel is here to talk to us about IM, which is, 7M, which is a art piece for the Upper Scissor Tail Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Robbie Kinsel, I'm the Arts Liaison and Program Planner for the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, and I do want to let you know on the Scissor Tail Park art selection, one of the most important parts of art selection is the stakeholders who make the first recommendation on the artist. They work for a period of about six months from when council officially authorizes the announcement of the project. They work on three major events, from the first selection to the mandatory site tour with the artist, and then again on the final selection. And it probably represents over 20 hours of their work and study time. And so on the Scissor Tail Park Arts Selection Committee, we had former Mayor Mick Cornett and his designees Steve Hill, Councilwoman Meg Salier. We always use the designer of the project. In this case, it was Mary Margaret Jones with Hargraves. The operator had four different committee representatives, Maureen Heffernan, Jim Talbert, Blair Humphries, and Leslie Hudson. The contract oversight representative who works with the operator is always represented on the committee, and in this case, it was Brent Bryant in the city manager's office. And then Doug Cooper with the Parks Department. The Parks Department is responsible for probably more pieces in the, more artworks in the city's collection than any other department, so their weigh-in was important. We had two different MAPS, three representatives, Kim Lowe and Teresa Rose Crook, and then we had two different arts commissioners, former arts commission chair Jim Loftus, and then John Seward. And in this case, the Arts Commission recommended that we use a national public art juror, who was Helen Lessick, who was also involved in the art selection for Discovery Green in Houston, that our park is, is definitely patterned after. So I do want to present to you the work, Taking Flight. This is what you would see at night when you were positioned on the hill overlooking the stage at the northeast corner of Scissor Tail Park, and this is what the artist's concept shows it would look like during the day. I'm going to give you a couple of, of shots here. This is the location in the park, so you can see it with everything else going on around it, the convention center, the, the Hotel, the Chesapeake Arena. And here's another aerial view, so that you can see how it sits on the corner of the park site. We knew that during the process that construction would begin at this corner, and so part of the selection process involved the artists recommending any change orders that would need to be done. And so here, you'll see that three trees and one bollard will need to be moved, and we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss that with Hargraves and the MAPS office. Here's how you can see the height of Taking Flight with everything else that is built around it, certainly the top of the cafe, the top of the bandstand, and also from the hilltop, where you would view the work. And so the metal here is stainless steel. Each of these, what looks like a disc, is actually, the, the area around the disc is actually punched out, and this is very similar, if any of you are familiar with the Anish Kapoor work at Millennium Park, this is very similar type of treatment to how that was made. Both machines and robots take stainless steel plates, and they form them into this, and all of these stainless steel plates then are welded on site, and because of these punchouts, that's how the light would shine through it at night. The artist is proposing that there be a finish on the sculpture, and that is one of the things that, as the Arts Commission reviewed it, it made a recommendation that we utilize a conservator outside of the group to really check that and make sure that the piece will be easy to maintain, because the last thing we want to do is spend money on this and have it not perform in the way that we would want it. We don't want to saddle an operator with that. So that is one of their recommendations. And then during that, if, if council today authorizes that we negotiate the contract, we'll be working on that. And so bringing back a final contract might be a little delayed for those reasons. Okay? Here's how the artist, you know, every time we have an artist who's never been to Oklahoma participate in our public art projects, the first thing they say is, is your soil, the color of your soil, is so different than anything they've ever seen. So that was certainly something that played a large part in their conceptualization of this project. They're proposing a polyester powder coat finish, which is one of the most durable powder coat finishes available. A regular powder coat is often only a 10-year lifespan. This can be up to 25, but certainly something we definitely want to check on. It would require just once a year cleaning from a lift on site. Here's some of the extraordinary engineering involved. These are very preliminary drawings by the engineer that worked on the team, Silman, and this, this large orb would weigh about 20 tons. So this is another area where the Arts Commission weighed in, and they wanted to make sure that the surface underneath Taking Flight would not allow water to settle on it. They, they want it to run off the site, and they said that was very important when the site under it is, is redesigned. Here's another view. And I did want to go over a couple of the other recommendations from the Arts Commission when they viewed this last week. They wanted to make sure that the reflection, this is a highly reflective surface, they wanted to make sure that the reflection did not compromise any surrounding building or anybody driving, so that is one of the concerns that we will be looking at. And then right now, the artist is considering three different fabricators, and so if we are allowed to, if we are authorized to negotiate the contract, we'll be working to, to make sure that the right fabricator is also selected. We anticipate that the, the park will be completed in the summer of next year. This work will not be installed till around September, which allows the operator also to have another opening celebration, so that they can have, you know, a sequence of events to celebrate the opening of the park. Do you have any questions?
Robbie.
Mm-hmm.
When you said that the spear weighs 20 tons, that caught my attention, and those four poles that give the appearance that they're restraining the ball from going outward, but really are providing the support. So we're comfortable that they're strong enough to support 20 tons?
We are comfortable enough that we will have engineers that are licensed in the state of Oklahoma, both design it and review it and approve it.
And then hopefully keep people off of those at certain times to not add weight.
And so what will, I'm sure that this will have to be, have a check.
Yeah.
At least annually.
Well, be careful if we win the NBA championship or something like that.
Any other questions?
Any?
How tall was the, the bottom of the ball?
So the bottom of the ball, let's see, I had a measurement here. I know it's a little over the bandstand. Let's see, 19 feet, 6 inches.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you, Robbie.
Thanks.
That brings us to Z1. Councilwoman Salier, you'd wanted to talk about Z1, I believe.
Yeah, and it's sort of...
This is Skydance.
Yeah, Skydance Bridge. I had a fairly simple question. Councilman Shadid's may be more complicated, but I really just wanted to be sure that we were looking very hard at materials as we work through this replacement, and that we, you know, try to identify something in this go-round that might be a little bit more durable.
There's wood deck on, on the Skydance Bridge.
Right.
Over time, it, it took on moisture and swelled, and had some very large significant humps that made it almost inaccessible. And we'd fix them, and then they'd go again, and it was a continual issue. So we're looking at putting in some lightweight concrete panels in there that will be, will not have any difference in the structural capabilities or impact on it, which would be a smoother, long-lasting solution.
Great. That was my comment.
That brings us to AH, a resolution supporting the U.S. Census Bureau's efforts to conduct a complete and accurate count, and I believe we, we have a presentation that will be introduced by Jane.
Hello, I'm Jane Abraham with the city manager's office, and I would just like to introduce Patricia Woodward, who is with the U.S. Census Bureau and is our representative in Oklahoma City.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. I am so pleased to be here because the 2020 census is on the way, and your issuance of a proclamation or a resolution in support of the U.S. Census Bureau count everyone once and only once in the right place is the beginning. You notify the residents that, as elected officials, you support it, you recognize the benefit that everyone is counted, and that you recognize the amount of funding that the city will receive when everyone's counted. So in forming a complete count committee for Oklahoma City, you would ask stakeholders and other elected officials to participate in the Census Complete Count Committee to address the undercount. One of the statistics that I would like to make you aware of is 4.6% of children under five in Oklahoma City was not counted, I'm sorry, in the state of Oklahoma, was not counted in the 2020 census. And so that number is a significant loss of revenue. And so we want to identify those persons who are in apartment dwellings, the homeless, the uninformed, that you would educate and make people aware and encourage them utilizing the resources that the city have. Because you, Oklahoma City, we are the flagship city of the state of Oklahoma, and we want to make sure that we count everyone once and in the right place. I appreciate your time. Thank you so very much for your interest and support.
Can I ask you a question? Can you remind me when the 2020 census results would be published? When will they be available to us?
They will be available in 2021. The president will receive it in December of 2020, and then in 2021, sometimes in the early first quarter, it will be made public.
Thank you.
I have asked the, Ms. Smiley, to distribute my card with my Oklahoma telephone number on it for you if you have any additional questions, and I will be available for any other presentations to other groups within the city.
Thank you very much for your commitment and service. I understand that this really facilitates now the action by the council to really begin the process. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so you know the stakeholders, you know the people who are, would contribute to making this a successful count. The information is confidential. You will be able to do it on your cell phone or your computer. Everyone will get a unique census ID number. And because it's confidential, we remind people that you share your information with Amazon, at least more than what the census asks, and we don't share your name, and we don't do a mailing list. We are interested in the count to make sure that you are represented, your reapportionment, and particularly your funding.
I really would like to emphasize that point, because the reason, one of the reasons this is so important is that so much of the federal funding that we receive is based on a formula, dependent on the number of citizens in our state. Our representation by our elected officials is dependent upon the count, and so the repercussions are incredibly important for every citizen of the state of Oklahoma, and we need to know that.
Thank you. And we do want to mention that we are not interested in citizens, we are counting residents. The Constitution says, count every resident. And so because you mentioned that, the citizen question is on the census form because Congress recommended it, but initially, it was to count every resident for the reapportionment of the country. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. I'm excited about 2020. I'm going to every city in Oklahoma. I've been to Broken Bow, and it really has been exciting to drive and see the countryside, so I'm loving it here. Please, councilmen, councilwomen, reach out to me and give me some suggestions of how we can make sure that everyone's counted in Oklahoma City. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Okay, that brings us to, I believe, item AK.
Mr. Mayor, AK is an item that was before the Economic Development Trust last week.
Excuse me, I did, may I? I'm sorry, I skipped one. AI, wasn't that your request, Councilman Shadid?
Yep.
I'm sorry. If we could table AK for just a moment. AI, Councilman Shadid, you wanted to discuss that?
AI has two tracts of land next to Chesapeake Arena. I believe the city received from ODOT, then we transfer to Okura, who then does an RFP to see if it can be developed. Now, we transfer to Okura because they're the only entity that has the statutory authority to do that.
Yes.
Or can this be correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then my question is, do we do these RFPs, I guess, Pat is, do we do these in response to somebody coming forward and saying they have a proposal, which, or do we, I guess, does somebody already have an idea for what to do on this land?
It can, it can vary. Typically, we issue RFPs when we believe that the area is ready for development, or other things are beginning to happen in the area that would support the redevelopment of property that Okura has control of. So, for example, we also have RFPs out right now for several pieces of property in northeast Oklahoma City. We have one that we just will issue shortly for a block adjacent to the lower park. So it isn't necessarily that we have somebody who said, I really want to propose on this, although sometimes that does happen. Typically, it's because we think the area is ready for development, and in this case, obviously with the, the park and the convention center and the boulevard being completed, it's, it's ready to get that process started.
And that makes sense. So in this case, do we have somebody interested? Does somebody have an idea on the table?
You know, I've, I've received several emails since the story was in the paper from different people, so I would say yes, but they're usually from a law firm, so I don't know who they are.
The sadness, I feel, when I look at the old Stage Center site, and I think about how we did that, where Clayco, we did an RFP, Clayco gets like a many, many, many month head start with all their architects and all that, and then, and then someone like Millhouse only gets 90 days. Well, today, we'd love to have the Millhouse, or something like that, but they, they don't have enough time to compete with those who are way, way ahead of them. So it seems like you run the risk when it's initiated by somebody who already has an idea, who's been working on it for a while, they have an unfair head start, but...
Well, either that, or it's just the nature of the competitive market, you know, the competitive real estate market. There's a lot of people out there that know property that Urban Renewal has control of, and they, they're watching it. They, they know it's, it's about, you know, we'll issue an RFP. We're issuing one on some property at Third and Walnut that, that people have called about through the years. So I, people, people keep, the development community keeps an eye on these things.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now AK. Sorry, Mr. Caffey.
No, thank you, Mayor. AK is an economic development item that was before the Economic Development Trust last week. It's a $450,000 allocation for 150 Quality Jobs for Rural Sourcing Incorporated, and this morning, we have Ingrid Miller, who's the COO of Rural Sourcing Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmen and women. Appreciate the time, and we'll try and be concise this morning. Please feel free to ask questions. So Rural Sourcing is a technology out... So Rural Sourcing is a technology outsourcing company, not a staffing firm. We are providing business solutions to clients here in the U.S. at the Fortune 1000 level or at the mid-market level. And what we do is compete with offshore. So we're bringing jobs back from places like India and others because we believe that you don't need to live in Austin, you don't need to live in Boston or New York to do high-tech development. You can do that work. There's great people here in places like Oklahoma City. So we are, currently have centers in Augusta, Georgia, Jonesboro, Arkansas, Mobile, Alabama, and Albuquerque, New Mexico. And we think these are cities that have great talent but have been overlooked by larger corporations. So we're interested in Oklahoma City. I'll talk a little bit about the process that we went through. We'll move to the next. So we began by looking at 50 mid-sized metros. We gather a volume of data about those cities and what they provide from a talent perspective, cost of living, quality of life. And we looked through those 50, chose 10 that we sent out to RFI. They, responses were received from Oklahoma City and others. And we then narrowed down to three. We do site visits with those three. So we traveled here to Oklahoma City and were welcomed by your both city and state economic development leaders, as well as your business community. And we found something special here in Oklahoma. So we are looking at how these cities can provide the talent, what the business community is like, what the tech community is like, how we can get involved, and then reviewing those city and state incentives. So from an economic impact perspective, we will be investing a million and a half in CapEx over three years to get up and running, spending approaching $2 million over five years in rent and parking. And then annually, we'll be spending over $10 million when we're at capacity in payroll and salary. So we'd like to get to 50 in the first six months. And these will be anything from .NET Java developers to QA testers, project managers. We'll be working on cutting-edge projects. So this isn't just backend development work or things that you won't see. We do work for great clients like a rental car company. We've helped them build out their mobile app that allows you to return your car at the airport. We've done work in both pharmaceutical space as well as consumer products. And so it's exciting and interesting. And I think we build a great place for software developers to thrive. The first-year average salary is about $65,000, ranging from anywhere, entry-level jobs at the $40,000 mark, all the way up to greater than $100,000 for more senior-level talent. And then, you know, our stakeholders, as we, as we talk about our core values and what we do, colleagues, clients, and communities. So our colleagues come first. We believe that the more we invest and focus on our colleagues, they can successfully deliver for our clients. And then it's all about community for us. So we are spending a lot of time getting to know other business leaders, working within the university system. Brent, if you'll move to the next. Oh, you did, sorry, back one. Thank you. So volunteering, each of the offices, the development centers chooses local charitable giving that they invest both time, money, and technology. So we've helped local charities by, for a humane animal shelter. We rewrote their volunteer application. We're donating time to groups like Paws and Stripes, which is a military PTSD program that provides animals. So we've helped revamp their solutions. We also are heavily involved in STEM education. So we like to start at both the middle and high school levels, going in and either teaching classes, bringing students to our location to show them what the day and the life looks like. We're involved with programs specific to minority groups in tech, like Girls Who Code and others. And so I think what you'll find and what we bring to Oklahoma City is that we embrace the communities that we're in. We hire locally. We will relocate some folks who have left Oklahoma City to go to other cities for technology jobs and look to try and bring them back to their hometown. So Brent, would you like to give the summary?
In summary on this project, this is, today what we're seeking is, are two things. One is authorization to negotiate. The other one is to allocate $450,000 to this project. This is going to be, we anticipate a standard performance-based contract that'll be paid out over a five- to seven-year timeframe. It'll all be subject to them meeting the job requirement, the job salary threshold, along with the investment threshold that they proposed to us. And we anticipate bringing an agreement back to you in November or December. I'll bring it back to the council or to the trust, and then we'll bring it back to the council after that. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick comment. In case you don't know, the location of the Plow Building is very close to the Oklahoma School of Science and Math. We've got amazing high school juniors and seniors there that would just partner with you wonderfully.
That's wonderful.
So I just want to mention that to you.
I appreciate that. We're both excited about the opportunity in Bricktown and looking at locating there and in that revival and changes that are all going on in that area. But appreciate that info.
Well, and these kids come from all around the state. They represent, you know, from year to year, all 77 counties, and they're the best and brightest that we have in the area of science and math. So it's a gem.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I think this is great in terms of diversifying our economy, and can you, can you walk me through how, in terms of arriving at a number for the incentives, how does that process work? Like, who did you meet with? Who decides that number?
Here specifically in Oklahoma City or?
Right. Here in Oklahoma City. I'm asking.
So we've worked with both local and state representatives from your economic development groups, and they have negotiated with our CFO and in discussions about what our costs are that we outlay. Incentives are imperative in what we do. Our ability to grow and expand and create new jobs, it's extremely expensive to open a new center in a new city. And so we are, as we're looking across the country at those opportunities, and when we look at how we compete with India and the offshore groups where things are much less expensive, it's imperative that we're offsetting some of those costs so that we can get up and running quite quickly.
So would you meet with the Oklahoma City Chamber?
Yes, we've met with both the Chamber. We've met with representatives from the city. We've met with representatives from state economic development as well.
But do you negotiate them? I mean, when you're negotiating them out, is that with the Chamber or with the city?
I'll apologize. So my CFO did the specific negotiations. I couldn't tell you the exact names, Brent, if you have, of who exactly we spoke with.
Is it okay to answer? Yes, yes. Go ahead.
The way this works is they send out a RFI, request for information about locating. They work with the Chamber of Commerce. They provide us a number of jobs, anticipated investment, average salary. Based on that, we put it into our economic impact model. And then they consult with Kathy O'Connor and myself. And then we give the Chamber a recommended number to offer to the company. And that's what we did in this case.
I guess that's where I'm confused. Is it the Chamber that makes the recommendation? Because I've seen that in some of our memos and then other times not. Is it the Chamber? My understanding is the Chamber is making the recommendation.
They make the recommendation to Kathy and I, and then we either say yes, no, or, and typically, we're in agreement with them.
Have you ever not been in agreement? Have we ever accepted a number other than what the Chamber recommended to us?
Well, we've certainly negotiated with companies in the past. The answer to that would be yes. But...
But when the Chamber comes up with the number?
Well, they're using our formula. So we're all using the same formula on it. So it's, they know what our metrics are and our formulas, and they have that information, and we have that information. So generally, we do come up with a statement.
But I think as we, when we saw with the Amazon Fulfillment Center, the formula is not, you don't plug in X, Y, and Z. I mean, there's some, there's some subjective criteria, there's some leeway there. How much the investment is in the warehouse, how many, it's not just, you create X amount of jobs for this salary, so you get this incentive. There's some, there's some wiggle room there. Yeah. So who makes the decision on that final number?
At the end of the day, the Chamber will provide Kathy and I an email with all the detail, and it will provide us the information. There's a range. And they'll make a recommendation.
Why? I guess the question, why do we?
And it's within that range.
But now, we've done this for many, many years. As you said, there is a formula. We have lots of experience. Why, why do we need the Chamber to make, give us that recommendation? Why not just you or inside the city make that, come up with that number?
That was part of the policy that was established by this council to have the Chamber be the gatekeeper of this as when we're working with companies, because they're working with companies, working site selectors.
The Chamber's more than the gatekeeper. The Chamber goes out and actively pursues, and they're the ones that deal with all the confidential leads that come in and take care of that. The Chamber is...
I understand that. But you said, okay, so you said the council made a policy decision that the Chamber would be the gatekeeper.
It's part of the policy.
But that must have been before my time because we haven't, when was that done?
Can I add something here? The city council approves a contract with the Chamber of Commerce every year to provide economic development services to Oklahoma City. A part of that is managing the strategic investment program on behalf of the city council. They do the intake, and Brent and I, then, we try to agree on a number. That number is taken to the trust and then the city council. And if you disagree with the number, the amount to allocate, the trust and the city council have an opportunity to vote on that number. That's what, that's the item that's before you today.
I guess what I'm getting at is that neither, neither city staff or the Alliance for Economic Development or this council has ever modified that number that comes out of the Chamber, ever. And so when they come up with that number, that is going to be the number for all intensive purposes.
I can't say that that is 100% true. There are times when we disagree with the amount that the Chamber has recommended, and Brent and I will say, no, we think that's too much. We think, you know, we need to look at it this other way. And, you know, it's, it is a, it is an iterative process and something that we go back and forth on in some cases. Some projects are much more straightforward. This one, for example, was pretty straightforward. Great jobs, high-tech jobs, in a great location. So, you know, but there's, there are parameters to the program. For example, if they, if they, if a company wants to locate in an enterprise zone area in a, in a distressed census tract, we have a little bit more latitude about salary levels that they have to pay and the amount of incentives. So, you know, it's, it definitely isn't just, we always take the Chamber's number and we always do what they tell us. It's, it's a negotiated process. And you have the, you, the city council and the Economic Development Trust have the opportunity to vote these resolutions up or down.
But the Economic Development Trust and the council has adopted criteria, which is used by the Chamber and by our staff, so that when we come in with a number that's the same or similar, that shouldn't be surprising, based upon the parameters that we're given on each company.
It's based on the policies you've adopted.
So the state incentives you got was, was how much?
4.75 million over 10 years.
Okay. And who negotiates that? Are we, I mean, when we, when we were coming up with 450,000, is one of our criteria that they're going to get 4.75 million from the state?
No, no.
It's completely independent?
It's completely independent. The quality jobs program is very formulaic. We, we don't even really get involved in those discussions. And I think the state pretty much has a model very similar to ours, numbers of jobs, payroll amount, average wages, will they provide health insurance? And they run it through their model and they come up with a number.
That wouldn't be a variable for us. If they got an especially generous allocation from the state, we wouldn't take that into consideration and maybe hold back a little bit because they got so much from the state. Or conversely, if the state decided this isn't something they really wanted to invest in and really didn't give them as much as they wanted, that wouldn't be a variable for us to maybe do more.
I think it varies from project to project. So typically, we don't really even know what their quality jobs allocation is.
Until?
We, we sometimes never know. I mean, I, well, we could find out. It's public record. But we, it isn't a part of our process.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. How did we compare, you know, when you say you get down to the final three candidates in terms of cities, of locations, as far as number of potential IT professionals within our city? Are we about the same or?
Yeah. So if I think of the 10 finalists that we looked at, you were towards the top in size. So this will be the largest city that we locate in. And, and we want to be an employer choice. So typically, we do not locate necessarily in cities of this size. But your tech community is still on the, you know, it's still working to really gain momentum. There's a lot of great mid-sized, smaller companies and then a lot of great larger companies that have internal IT. And so it felt, from what we saw and all that we learned, that we could play a big part in the tech community here. And so we were okay with the fact that this is a larger city, but that the tech community felt similar to our other city sizes. And from a talent perspective, we saw that the talent pipeline that we require is here.
That's great. And hopefully, you'll be the instigator of continued growth in that area, and will soon rival Austin and some of the other cities.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for your investment in Oklahoma City. We're excited.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. I think that was the final item that anyone had pulled out to discuss under the consent docket. Is there anything else? We already have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, we will cast our votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to page 15 on the printed agenda, the Item 8 Concurrent Docket. This is an opportunity for the council to weigh in on some of the things done by our trusts. We have Items A through N, and we can take them with one motion.
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
Got a motion and a second. Does anyone wish to discuss any of the individual items? Seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. I'll take a moment before we move to Item 9, sort of a personal privilege, but we get sort of sequestered up here. And I want everybody on the horseshoe to know something I think is very tragic for our community. I mentioned earlier this morning that Pam Henry experienced some medical complications yesterday, and I have just been informed that this morning she passed away. And so a great light in our community that has brought much, much joy, I think, to many of us, and certainly been an unbelievable champion for the disability community in our city. And I'm glad that she's memorialized outside and was able to experience that a few months ago. We've got a great remembrance of her just outside City Hall that will be there forever. Moving on to Item 9, items requiring separate votes. We have quite a few planning items today. So we'll start with 9A1. These are all ordinances on final hearing. They've been recommended for approval. This is 6101 North May Avenue from C3 to R4. Councilman Shadid.
Did anyone sign up to speak? This had unanimous planning commission recommendation and approval. There's no protest. I move for approval.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A2, at 240, 244 West Britton Road from R1 to I1. Councilman Cooper.
Did anyone sign up to speak? I'll move for adoption.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A3, 3427 Northwest 50th from R1 to O1. Councilman Shadid.
Did anyone sign up to speak?
No.
This did have one protest, but had unanimous planning commission recommendation for approval. Oops, sorry. If nobody else signed up for speak, I'll move for adoption.
Okay. Take a motion and a second. We've got it. And any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A4, 2509 South Tulsa Avenue from R1 to PUD 1690. Councilman McAtee.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. If the applicant representative would come forward. This has got an interesting background, this particular area, and I'd like you to tell them what this project is. And there was a protester listed, and I think he's already been mollified. Is that correct?
That's correct. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a unique project in that it is currently operating as a series of soccer fields. My client intends to maintain them as soccer fields, but it was staff's position that if he ran these as a traditional soccer league in which he was accepting money for the ability to play soccer, he needed to rezone it. Right now, on the weekends, he just runs a series of rec leagues where nobody's paying. We did have a protest as the... We did have a protest, as the councilman indicated. Protest primarily dealt with drainage. We were able to work, work something out. It is worth noting, it's zoned R1 now. Again, these are grass soccer fields. I think one of the things that we relied on is, if you think about what potentially could happen in terms of drainage, if we developed this whole thing out with single-family homes and streets, perhaps it would be a bigger drainage problem than maintaining this as a grass soccer field. So ultimately, the protest was withdrawn, and the planning commission did recommend approval unanimously.
Some of the background information in this particular area, this is an area that the Neighborhood Alliance has been very helpful in getting neighborhood li, association started. We were able to put sidewalks and repave the streets in the neighborhood, and this soccer field will meet a real need for the children over there who play soccer as their national sport. So thank you for your efforts. Has anybody signed up to protest? Seeing no protest, the planning commission did approve it. I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9A5, 4100 North Stair Road, moving from R1 to PUD 1691. And we do have someone who has signed up to protest, but we'll start with you, Councilman Greenwell.
Well, let's hear from the developer, and then hear from the protester.
Okay. And sir, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself with name and address.
Good morning. Jason Spencer, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. So what we've got before you today is a rezoning to allow for a PUD, allowing for 5,000 square-foot lots. We think this is a good transition from the residential on the south and east to the commercial that's located on the north and west of the property. We did work with the, the neighbors at planning commission. Their main concern was for the houses that order this addition, whether or not there'd be two-story houses. We did agree that the houses on those sides of our addition would, would be limited to a single story, and if they had a bonus room, that that window would face away from their It was recommended for approval by planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. Yeah, we have Mr. Richard Hooper. Mr. Hooper, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
My name is Richard Hooper. I live at 10521 Northwest 40th Street, which is directly south of the planned PUD. I'm here to ask you a couple of questions and try to, to simulate some balance. The homeowners along the south and east side, their relative investment is probably as much as this investment, and I think you should consider a more fair balance. The planning commission was kind enough to have second-story buildings face the street away from our yards, and we requested that. The thing that is bothering the homeowners' association is that the lot size is pretty small. It's like 50 feet or 5,000 feet. Does not match our lot sizes that are, which are 75 feet. The other thing is, is that we were told that this was going to be a retirement community, and we asked the planning commission to insert age restrictions on these properties. They denied it. So what I'm asking you today is that either we, they need to match our lot sizes, or they need to be a retirement community like they said they would. The other, and the last thing I want to say, is that the land that they're talking about is quite historical. There are barns on this land that have been there for 100 years. Joseph Eichmann ran a stake in the ground in 1899 in the land run to claim this 160 acres. All of this 160 acres surrounding the farm, the working farmhouse, has been developed. This is the last nine acres of that original stake, and I ask you to consider the historical value of the land, not just for me, but for the developer too, because this will sell the property. You don't have to jam a bunch of lots in there and, to make a profit. The land will sell itself simply because of its historical value. I know the, the buildings are going to be raised, but if left alone, they would stand there another 100 years. I don't, there's a milk barn that has an elevated concrete, so you can actually milk the cows. There's a pole barn that's been there since World War II. It's, it's a significant nine acres that is of particular, I mean, the residents surrounding feel exactly the same way. So I ask you to either require them to invoke or insert a retirement, age requirement, I'm sorry, an age requirement, or match our lot sizes.
The, the current property owner of, of the house that this kind of wraps around is, is the one that's selling it to the applicant, right?
And it's my understanding that the applicant's purchased that, that piece of property as well, the house wraps around.
Yeah. Well, I mean, in, in this case, I mean, the staff has, has said that it adheres to our comp plan, planning commission unanimous approval. I mean, I can certainly understand that you want the development right next to you to be almost exactly like yours. I don't think there's any precedent for us forcing a developer to, to put an age restriction on it. The, the base zoning of it right now is R1, and so this is just a slight modification to make the lot sizes under the minimum. Is, is that correct?
Correct. So R1 would require 6,000 square-foot lots. We're asking for 5,000. In exchange, we've got some architectural standards requiring 70% brick, rocker stone, and some other basically requirements in the PUD that would offset some of those.
Right. Does anybody else have any questions?
I was curious, what's the planned minimum square footage there?
For the houses?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure what he does plan to build. We've got several lots are in excess of 5,000 square-foot lots, so the intent is, is for a little bit smaller house, but mainly for smaller lots where there's less maintenance for the owners to, to partake in.
Thanks. Well, with that, I'll, I'll move for approval.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to 9A6, at 6932 West Memorial Road, moving from PUD 47 to SPUD 1069. Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone 6932 West Memorial Road. I'm not aware of anybody that's signed up in protest. I'd move the item.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A7, at 1100 Southwest 59th, moving from C3 to SPUD 1071. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We have, we do have, the applicant has signed up to speak.
Okay, could we hear from the applicant? This is an interesting request for a change in use of the property. It's the first in Oklahoma City, as far as I am aware of. It's a bus terminal with direct bus usage services between Oklahoma City and Mexico. And there will not be any maintenance, repair, mechanical work being performed here, and it's, it's actually, they've upgraded the facility, so David, would you please?
Sure. And so my, my client had signed up, perhaps not seeing me in the, in the back of the room. But, so what we have here is a former, former convenience station. This is an area that, this site in particular has seen a lot of problems. I think there's a lot of homeless problem here. What you'll notice in your packet is you'll see a lot of letters of support. My client has gone in and has been able to clean it up, and so what he offers is a, a bus terminal in which he operates a bus route between here and Mexico. The neighborhood is Hispanic, and it is a new use that's popping up in these, these areas that has proved to be very successful to reconnect families. So the planning commission did spend a lot of time on this in terms of having meetings on-site, and we negotiated some items within the spud that ultimately led to the planning commission recommending approval unanimously.
Thank you, David. And it was approved unanimously by the planning commission, no protests, so I would recommend approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
9A8, 118, I'm sorry, 118 Southwest 43rd, from R1 to SPUD 1072. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Nope.
It was approved unanimously by the planning commission, so I'd move for approval.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A9, 1500 Southwestern, from AA to SPUD 1073. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Do we have anyone signed up? We do not.
Okay. Well, this is an application for a convenience store with gasoline sales at the corner of Southwest 149th Street and Southwestern. It continues to see commercial development being added along Western Avenue, which is a, a very viable and great alternative to I-35 if you're going to the football game down in Norman. So I'd encourage people to use Southwestern as much as possible. No protest. It was approved unanimously by the planning commission, so I recommend this for approval.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9B, and specifically 9B1, Amendment to the Master Design Statement. And then B2, Ordinance on Final Hearing relating to 1321 Southeast 66th, moving it from I-2 to PUD 1685. Councilman Stone, would you like to explain those items?
Has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
It was passed unanimously by the planning commission? Do I need to make a motion on one first?
I'm sorry?
Do I need to make a motion on item?
Yes, we need a motion on the amendment and then on the ordinance.
Make a motion for approval on item B1.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to B2.
I'll get this passed by the planning commission. If no one signed up to speak, I'd make a motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9C1, the Amendment to the Master Design Statement, and 9C2, Ordinance on Final Hearing relating to 5800 Southwest 149th, moving from AA to PUD 1692. Councilman McAtee, would you like to explain these two items?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant would come forward? If you would, David. Has anybody signed up to speak on this?
No.
There's a couple of changes from the time that the planning commission approved it until what you see here, so I'd like the applicant to explain those changes and then go from there.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, again on behalf of the applicant. What we have here is a PUD application that would allow mining. So what we have currently on-site, and frankly, surrounding this on, on most sides, is a special permit that has been in place for quite some time to allow the mining operation to, to go on. What we seek to do through this PUD is to lift the restriction on the hours of operation. So what we will do through this PUD is to allow the mining to continue, but to allow it to be 24 hours. If you look north of our site, you'll notice it's a heavy industrialized area, all of which has no limitation on the hour of operation. So if you think about why we have limits of, of hours and restrictions, it's, it's to protect residential. What you'll notice here, and ultimately why the planning commission felt comfortable approving this unanimously, is there is no residential component within this area. We are immediately north of the river. South MacArthur dies about a mile south of us at the river. This is predominantly a mining area. But in, in terms of what potential impact may be, if you look at the site design, the way that, the way that they have set this up is to ensure that the trucks will be able to enter the site off of MacArthur and loop back to Southwest 149th in a manner where they're directed back towards the interstate. The interstate is in close proximity with a full interchange right there, with easy access. In discussing this item with Councilman McAtee, he did express some concern about the types of trucks. My client does inform me that jake brakes are prohibited. We can, you know, amend this if needed, and also that we will install signage directing truck traffic as it leaves the site to ensure that there would be no component of injuring any residential areas that may be a couple miles north of this. So again, planning commission to recommend approval of this unanimously. We'd ask for your approval in behalf of answering any questions.
What's the procedure to get the no-jake brakes and get the signage into the PUD?
Bob?
You just need to make that as a, a motion to amend the PUD with those, that wording in it, and then have a vote, and then...
So we'll need then two votes? Has anybody signed up?
No.
No.
Unless the council has some questions. I don't see any. I move the amendment for the jake...
You're removing C1, the amendment. C1 is what you're moving first.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, Larry's going to move an amendment, I think.
Oh, an amendment, two, okay. Got it, sorry.
Okay. The amendment for no-jake brakes and a right-turn-only signage?
Yeah, well, so, yeah, we will install signage directing our trucks to where they need to go, to ensure that they don't... The exact wording, we're going to work out, and be happy to work with you, but we will install signage and make that a part of the requirement here.
So I'd like the, first motion to include those in the PUD?
Second.
Okay, we've got a, an amendment to the PUD, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And now a motion to approve the PUD as amended.
Do we, do we need to do the amendment to the Master Design Statement first?
Yes, C1.
C1. Do you mind making that motion first?
So, so moved.
Got a motion and a second on the C1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we can go to C2, the, the actual ordinance.
And now for the actual ordinance. Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That brings us to 9D1, Amendment to the Master Design Statement to limit access to one drive on Southeast 140th. And then also Item D2, 14900 Southeast 140th, from C4, and AA to SPUD 1075. Councilman Stone, would you like to explain those items?
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Could the applicant come up and talk a little bit about the change on the Master Design Statement?
Once again, David Box, same address, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. I believe the change is simply incorporating the technical evaluations into the PUD. So if you look at what the staff had asked us to do in the technical evaluations, it was to limit, I believe, the number of, of drives, and that's what our site plan has shown, and it, the PUD has been modified accordingly.
So was the thought process there just keeping the slower traffic off of Chalk Hall?
I believe so. I believe having the additional access had some problems in terms of site distance, and so the way we had already designed the site was in compliance with how staff had wanted us to, to develop this site out. And it's an odd site in that you have straight C4 zoning this far out, and so it's, you know, as heavy as commercial zoning gets, and so in essence, what we have with this SPUD is a downzone of sort to allow this one user to operate here.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and, on Item D1, make a motion for approval.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on the Amendment to the Master Design Statement. Seeing no further discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then we've got the ordinance.
Make a motion for approval on Item D2.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to 9E, Ordinance on Final Hearing. This is 9240 Southwest 89th, moving from AA to PUD 1689. Councilman McAtee.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Would the applicant please come forward?
David, is there a reason you don't sit in the front row? Just, just kind of curious.
Counsel's exercise.
Y'all are going to get to more, hear more about zoning than you care to know about on this one, but David, if you would, I don't believe, has anyone signed up to protest?
Uh, no.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. What we have here is a PUD application that would allow half-acre lot development. Currently, it's zoned AA, which would be, as you know, a minimum of five-acre lots. So what we have is a PUD that would allow us to have half-acre lots. What we have is water, so we have connection to... What we have is water, so we have connection to city water, but we have no available public sewer. There was one individual that showed up at Planning Commission, and his concern, he lives in the neighborhood south, his concern was the aquifers. As we explained, we will be required and will connect to city water, so it's not anticipated that there would be any wells drilled within this property, because, again, we'll have city water. So this was an odd one in that we had a limited number of people at Planning Commission that day, so it comes to you with no recommendation. It was a three-to-three vote. It is consistent and compatible with the area. If you look at the developed pattern in this area, what you'll see is, when there has been development, and it's not just vacant rural AA land, everything is traditionally between the half-acre and up. And so as recently as, I believe, eight months ago, this council approved an application over off of Rockwell and 140th that were all half-acre or slightly greater. So everything you see in purple is consistent with the application that's before you today. Be happy to answer any questions.
On that map, where is the application exactly?
It's indicated in red.
Oh, the red one, I'm sorry.
So I'm not familiar with your color code, but the purple is all half-acre?
Yeah, the purple is all similar development pattern to what we are providing in this PUD, similar lot sizes.
And the green is what?
The green is right at half.
Acre?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which is a common development pattern when you have water but no sewer. In this ward and also in your ward. Councilman Stone.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion?
Seeing no questions, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have 9F.
David, you might as well stay.
These are ordinances on final hearing, recommended for approval. And we've got F1, a special permit to erect a telecommunications tower in the R1 area at 4,000 South Agnew. Councilwoman Sawyer.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is an application that we have already seen. It's, as you said, a special permit to erect a telecommunications tower. And, you know, as we've been working through these for the last number of months, I think there was a recommendation made that we hire a consultant to review these applications. And I believe that that was done and that the consultant that we hired recommend that we approve this site. So given all that information, I would approve this application.
We've got a motion and a second on 9F1. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9F2, Special Permit to Erect Telecommunications Tower in the I-2 Moderate Industrial District at 520 South MacArthur. Councilman Mcatee?
Thank you, Your Honor. Would the applicant please come forward? If you would explain to the council where you want to put this tower?
Sure. Again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So this is a telecom tower. It's in the parking lot of a commercialized area east of MacArthur, north of I-40, similar to the application that was just heard in Councilperson Sawyer's ward. The city likewise had their consultant conduct a review of the application and all the data submitted. That individual also recommended approval here. It's a capacity issue. I do have individuals from my team if you'd like to hear it, but it is a capacity issue. This is needed to serve this area. Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously.
Do we have any protesters, Francis?
No, sir.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, and on the unanimous approval by the Planning Commission, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second on 9F2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9F3, Special Permit to Operate an Automobile Dealership in the C3 area at 1,800 West Memorial Road. Councilman Stone, cipher?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is such an unusual permit, and the dealership you may have seen on a national ad that's on all the major news networks. I thought I'd have David show us a little bit of what the dealership's gonna look like.
Sure. So this is, again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Again, this is, it's an automobile dealership. In the code currently, a C3 site requires a special permit in order to operate an automobile dealership. And so I represent Carvana. They are a unique car-buying experience in that it's not a traditional car lot where you would go and shop. Most of the interaction occurs online, and when you buy a car, you'd have two options. You could have it delivered to your home on the truck that you saw on the first slide, or the second option, and Councilman Stone, cipher, has a couple of coins that you might pass them around, you'll be given a coin.
We're wanting to know, do these work?
I don't know. I guess you'll have to show up and see if this gets approved. The other option aside from the home delivery is to receive a coin that you'll see momentarily in the mail, and you would show up to this, what you see on your screen now, a glass tube, and it is a car vending machine. So you literally show up, insert the coin, and a mechanical arm would go, similar to a bag of chips that you could get on the first floor here at City Hall, and grab your car, dispense it down to you, and you could drive off. One of the things that is positive about this is it is not like a traditional car lot where you're going to have an enormous amount of traffic. The only reason you come here, it's by appointment only, because you've already purchased a car and you're getting it dispensed. It's gonna be an attractive, modern building right there on the Kilpatrick Turnpike. It's just west of all the wonderful things happening at Chiswick Creek. And we'd be happy to answer any questions. Planning Commission did recommend approval.
There are no questions. There were no protests on this, Mayor, so I'd move for the approval of the special permit, please.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That concludes the lengthy planning portion of our agenda today, and brings us to 9G1 and 2. 9G2 is a resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Downton Oklahoma City Business Improvement District. But first, before we consider such a resolution, we should also have, we should hold a public hearing, and that is 9G1. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in the public hearing portion of this consideration? Seeing none, we would proceed to 9G2, the resolution for consideration by the council? We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9H, Ordinance on Final Hearing, Adopting and Ratifying the Assessment Role for Improvement in Special Services Assessment District Number Six, otherwise known as the Downtown Improvement District. I would entertain a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, this brings us to 9I. We have, there's 9I1, which is an amendment to the proposed ordinance, 9I2, which is the ordinance. It is scheduled on our agenda for final hearing. Councilwoman Sawyer, is it fair to preview now that we do not expect to have a vote today?
I think it is fair to preview now that we would really appreciate hearing from folks that have come down here today to talk about this, but we've continued to have discussion about this matter very robustly throughout the community. And, well, I thought that we perhaps had a solution to resolving most people's issues with the amendment that I proposed a couple of weeks ago. I think there's been a lot of additional work done and a proposal that may be a little bit simpler than this. And so I think, I guess I don't know what the procedure is, do I?
Well, so there's 9I1, 9I2, 9J1, 9J2. If you, we could go ahead and hear from people, and then you could do the deferral maybe at that point.
What I'd like to do is have a public hearing and hear from the people that are here today. I think they deserve to be heard. I have received a tremendous amount of phone calls, emails, et cetera, about this issue. And the one thing that it brought to mind, and I talked to Meg Friday with some of the lawyers that are involved, that we need some more discussion with the stakeholders. We need to better understand what their issues are and bring this back to the council on another day.
Great. Francis, will we need deferral votes on the two amendments in here?
No, the motion can include all.
Including items I and J together? So we can do one motion when we get to that point? We can do one motion to defer everything under I and J? Okay.
Thank you. That was the question. I didn't know if I had to defer the amendments.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Can I just for clarification? In today, we are not gonna vote on anything about the issue, either for the two neighborhoods or for the city in general.
That appears to be the case. I can't promise that until we cast our deferral vote, but that seems to be the intent.
Thank you.
That's, yeah. So before that moment, though, let's hear from the people who have signed up to speak on this topic. And we'll start with Cameron Spradling. And Mr. Spradling, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
I'm Cameron Spradling, an attorney, and my office is at the northeast corner of Fourth Walker, Suite 140, 500 North Walker. I speak on behalf of an ad hoc group of Airbnb hosts who have now aligned themselves together and refer to themselves as the OKC Airbnb Host, some of whom are here right now. If you raise your hands, those Airbnb hosts. If you desire to know the individual names of the OKC Airbnb Host, I'll be happy to provide those names. Yesterday, I emailed each of you an independently attained six-page legal memorandum that evidences the legal pitfalls of what has been euphemistically called a home-sharing ordinance. It is not my purpose today to recite from that legal memorandum or take up your time reading a legal memorandum or discussing those issues. It is my purpose to tell you and suggest that you should proceed with caution in regard to this matter. It was my understanding that Airbnb National was attending, was sending a representative who was gonna speak this morning as well. And if this goes to a full hearing, I expect Airbnb National to become involved in this matter. The legal memorandum discusses the times that such restrictions have happened, even recently over the summer, and how they've been struck down at a great cost to municipalities. Airbnb also has suggested when they run into troubles with the municipalities that they'll go to state government and deal with the state, and thus remove the revenue that a municipality has happily received to date. This home-sharing ordinance is designed to give some special exception for Heritage Hills and Edmire Park. It is my purpose today to provide to you all a perspective of who are these Airbnb hosts and who are their clientele. For example, although this is targeted at Heritage Hills and Edmire Park, only one of my clients is an Airbnb host that lives in Heritage Hills. The others are simply concerned Airbnb hosts who strongly believe that if they fail to rise up as a collective, an ordinance such as the proposed will spread in a hodgepodge manner all over Oklahoma City. My singular client that lives in Heritage Hills, she utilizes her detached garage apartment as an Airbnb. The income she receives from the utilization of her detached garage apartment that would otherwise sit empty defrays her property tax. That's what she uses it for. Is that not a less intrusive utilization of her detached garage apartment than having a renter? Is that not a wise use of her property rather than having a detached garage apartment sitting empty? If we're talking about Heritage Hills, we're talking about widows with fixed incomes, do they not have the right that when the home was built 100 years ago and has a detached garage apartment, to utilize it as an Airbnb? None of my clients have an Airbnb in Edmire Park. However, I myself live in a historical home in Edmire Park. My next-door neighbor is an absentee owner. I have never met her. I understand that she once lived there over 10 years ago. She leases this house to three or four young professional millennials a year so that they can be close to work at law firms downtown. And then she puts up the house for sale for another year and repeats that process. That is her right, but I, as a neighbor, deal with parties. I deal with numerous cars. I deal with a lawn that is rarely mowed. I would prefer that she furnish the home and become an Airbnb host. Why? Because one of my clients, that's exactly what he did. He had a rental property. He had to chase rent. He had to deal with deadbeats. And his choice was, I'll furnish this home. I'll keep it nice. I'll only have an Airbnb when somebody sees it and sees online how terrific this property looks. That house looks better in the neighborhood. It's safer in the neighborhood. It's more profitable to this man. It's better for Oklahoma City Airbnbs are good for Oklahoma City, and they're good for our economy, which brings me to any efforts that the Hotel Association would want to cripple the Airbnb market. Now, it is my understanding, anecdotally, that there are some 300 Airbnbs in Oklahoma City. It is also my understanding that there are 17,000 hotel rooms. Now, I strongly doubt, in the marketing plan or the investor portfolio of any of these hotels, there was a concern raised that our newly-planned hotel's profitability would be based on a precursor plan to cripple Airbnb market in Oklahoma City. It is not the same market. I asked my clients, anecdotally, to write out a story of your clientele, so all of these stories are true. Who leases an Airbnb? I can tell you, one of my Airbnb owners keeps an Airbnb near one of our nationally-known prosthetic centers. Why? Because he had a 54-year-old woman who tragically lost a limb and has to go five different visits to the prosthetic center to be fitted, to learn how to walk, to come back, and return. She does not want to climb stairs of a hotel. She does not want to get on elevators as she learns to walk with a prosthetic device. She wants to have the privacy of being in a home-like atmosphere so that she can learn to walk on a prosthetic device. That's good for Hanger. That's good for Sabalich. That's good for Oklahoma City. That's good for our reputation. That's good for that woman. Who else goes to an Airbnb? A family who has a loved one dying at our hospital, at the OU Medical Center, who is suffering. That family wants to stay in an Airbnb. They don't want to walk by the noise of a hotel and the partying going in at a bar. They are suffering, and they want to be in private. Who else does that? Who else leases Airbnbs? I can tell you, a family who's coming here for a funeral and is grieving over that lost loved one. They're not interested in the Thunder Game. They're not interested in a party at a bar. They're not interested in the joyous nature of a hotel. They're not interested in our Bricktown. They just want to grieve in private, and an Airbnb meets that need.
Mr. Spradling, could we, we've got a lot of people to speak. Would you help me?
I'm begging. Who else? Right downtown here, out-of-town law firms, and I include Tulsa law firms as well as out-of-state law firms, who have a trial in our federal court, and our state court uses Airbnb as their base station so they can prepare for trial and get ready for trial. You can't do that in separate hotel rooms. I've tried. It fails. The bottom line is, the home-sharing ordinance on a property owner's right is a restrictive covenant. I do not see one compelling governmental interest in doing this. And don't think it's good for Oklahoma City. I don't think it's good for Oklahoma. It's certainly not good for my clients. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Eric Groves.
Morning, members of the council. I represent Edmire Park Preservation, Inc., and we're gonna respond a little bit to what Mr. Spradling said, but I'm gonna defer to David Box, who will head off our presentation.
Vice Mayor, I guess if, I'll go now. You can take my slip out. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive.
All right. I represent Heritage Hills. There's a lot of questions, who stays at Airbnb. It's a very rosy picture that Mr. Spradling painted. There's a whole other set of people that stay at Airbnb. The group of guys looking to go have a bachelor party weekend, that's a group of people that stays at an Airbnb. As we said in the public hearing, I think it's important to note, we don't think that Airbnb should be outlawed, but I think if you look at what Airbnb is, it is a fundamental change of the use of property. And like every change of use of property, like I continued to parade to this podium this morning, notice and opportunity to be heard is something fundamental to the change of use of property. This council does it every other Tuesday. You make zoning changes. You allow the public the notice and opportunity to come down here and voice objection. That's all my client wants. We want reasonable restrictions, primarily so that we know when and if somebody next to us is going to operate one of these. He mentioned the individual that lives in Heritage Hills. We were very clear, I think, in the proposed amendments that we had working, we're not, we don't seek to prohibit the ability to utilize a garage apartment. If you looked at the way the amendment was currently drafted, it was our intent that the garage apartment would certainly be an allowed use through the Airbnb because it would be owner-occupied. So we're not seeking to do that. What we're seeking to do is to allow reasonable restrictions that a reasonable operator shouldn't have a problem with. And so there have been some additional amendments tossed around. We'd like the opportunity to delay this hearing, to continue to work through those issues. But I think fundamental in all this is my client's desire to be able to know when and if somebody's going to change the use of their property to operate one of these units. So we look forward to additional discussions on the issue, be happy to answer any questions you have for me or my client.
Would you, if you single out two HP neighborhoods, but not all HP neighborhoods, how do you defend an equal protection lawsuit for a property owner in one of those two neighborhoods who's not able to do the same, not able to utilize their private property the same way as anybody else in the 620 square miles of the city?
So I can only speak for Heritage Hills. I'd be happy if it was all HP. I'd be happy if these regulations were citywide. Again, I think in looking at some of the comments made by Ms. Sawyer, it was she was looking to make amendments based upon data. My neighborhood put forth an exhaustive survey of everybody that we could. I think we had over 150 replies to the survey to try to get what is the neighborhood's real feel on this issue. I do think Heritage Hills alone has significant factual differences about it that could defend a lawsuit as to why it's different. Heritage Hills, one of the first neighborhoods. It has a very unique set of circumstances that I'd be happy to, if you take a meeting with me, Dr. Shadid, visit with you about. My clients would love the opportunity to come sit down and talk with you. But I don't have any objection to it being all HP if that's an amendment you'd like to see.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just, I'm wondering what it is about those two neighborhoods that are different than the other HP neighborhoods?
Well, again, I'd be happy to debate that and share with you all the reasons we have.
I'm very familiar with both neighborhoods. You can just tell me what are, what's different.
I don't know. I don't represent Edgemere. I can tell you Heritage has more garage apartments, more carriage houses than any. We have single-lane driveways. We've got limited ability on the street to park. So again, there's a host of things. I don't think that's the purpose of this because there are amendments floating around. But if you'll take a meeting with us, we'd be happy to come visit with you, Dr. Shadid.
I mean, there's some of my favorite neighborhoods in the city. I mean, Edgemere Park is one of my favorite parks in the city. There's also, you know, there's a, it's very tangentially related, but it evokes that in me that, you know, we have Edgemere, there's a dark side to our city's history. I mean, these neighborhoods were developed with plats that specifically excluded anyone of African or Mongolian descent. Anyone who was black was not allowed to lease or own a home in Edgemere Park, and that plat didn't expire till 1975. Now, it went on to say that if you were a servant, you could be there, but you couldn't lease or rent or own a home in Edgemere. I mean, that's a dark, dark part of our city's history. And to, so I guess it just, it evokes some of that when I start hearing a couple of neighborhoods saying, we don't want those people, whoever those people are. I mean, it evokes some of those, some of that hurt.
I don't think you've heard that from a-
Certainly, I have not heard ethnic or-
Well, I don't think you've even heard the words "those people" once.
Correct.
Okay, so-
But whoever you, well, those people would be Airbnb utilizers.
Again, we want the ability to know when it's happening and have reasonable regulations. I think I opened my comments with saying, we don't want it outlawed, but as a matter of principle, I think when you change the use of property, which is what we believe this is doing, neighbors have, should have the opportunity to be notified of that. In terms of the dark history, unfortunately, those plat restrictions were common during that period of time. And it's not just Edgemere. Unfortunately, if you look at the city and most cities in this part of the world, that time period, that plat was, that plat restriction was almost uniform. Obviously, the Supreme Court has invalidated all those. I'm not sure what relevance that has to this discussion whatsoever, but sure, it's a dark, dark period in our history.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, Eric Groves, attorney, representing Edgemere Park Preservation, Inc.
We'll go ahead with you, Eric.
Eric's already spoken a little bit.
Oh, okay, all right, got it.
Has a tag team today. I've lived in Edgemere since 1974, and I'm familiar with the plat restrictions, Dr. Shadid, that you mentioned, and they have expired, and they were held unconstitutional anyway. So in the 1970s, when I was on this council, we sponsored ordinances designating Edgemere and other neighborhoods as historic preservation districts. Started out as an overlay, it is now a free, independent zoning district. Our land is zoned HP. As a result of that, a couple of things happened. The neighborhood was afforded a layer of protection that's not afforded necessarily to other neighborhoods, but it also comes with some burdens and responsibilities. We can't change the exterior of our homes without going to the HP Commission, seeking a certificate of appropriateness. The public policy behind this was to preserve the neighborhood, preserve the structures for posterity. And we, who live in that neighborhood, bear the burden of seeing that it's done. And we don't mind this. We've sure had our fair share of arguments over the years with the HP Commission about windows and garages and things, but I think we have largely succeeded and met the public policy of this city. Our neighborhoods are intact. If the Airbnb-type operation is allowed in places like Edgemere, it will be a fundamental change in the zoning district because it's transient accommodations. And that's just a fact. That fits the definition of the use unit in our zoning code. It's lodging. It's transient lodging. That's not permitted as things stand now. So when we started out, we said we would not want it to be permitted as a use of right. And then we, if it was going to be a conditional use permit, we said we didn't think that was sufficient either because anyone could go get one, just go down and buy a license, essentially. Then the suggestion came that perhaps it should be allowed by special exception. And we thought that over and decided that yes, that would work for several reasons. If someone wishes to convert their residence for transient accommodation purposes, short-term rentals, then they should apply for a special exception, give notice to their neighbors, and have a hearing so that if the neighbors object, they can be heard. Now, we have special exceptions for many things in this city, and we thought that was fair to everybody. It doesn't ban Airbnb operations. It simply regulates them. And in these neighborhoods, it's worth, I think it is worth regulating. We're already highly regulated. Now, there are several HP districts. Some are in Dr. Shadid's ward, some in Meg's, and some spoke up, three actually. Heritage Hills, Edgemere, and Putnam Heights objected. The other neighborhoods had diverse opinions, and their leadership decided not to appear before the council. If I had my druthers, all HP districts would be protected in the manner that I'm advancing. But they're not here to argue their cause, so we aren't. Now, special exception is not an unreasonable degree of regulation for this kind of lodging. Now, keep in mind that if it were not so, if there were not some degree of regulation, then an investor could come along and buy a whole street full of homes and turn them into Airbnb operations. That's not what was intended, at least in these HP districts. Now, as to the rest of the city, that is up to them and up to you as to how you wish to handle it. I think there should be further discussions between the stakeholders in this. That should include David and I on behalf of our neighborhoods. It should include those who want to operate these establishments and representatives of the city attorney's office. And I think if we sat down and talked this over, we might come to a point where we have a reasonable regulatory scheme. So, and by the way, I might add that this has been troublesome to many other cities around our country, and some of them have gotten it worked out. Some are still arguing about it. Yes, there, Councilman?
Eric, just from an accountant's perspective, since 1986, the Internal Revenue Service looks upon temporary lodging, less than 30 days, as a trader business and longer terms like hotel and, I mean, rental properties as passive. And they make that distinction, and they provide different tax treatment as a result of this. So can you, and Mark and Kenny, come in and discuss the issue of this being a trader business versus a traditional situation where you have a residential house and you decide to rent it for six months, a year, two years? There's a distinction, at least from the Internal Revenue Service's-
Well, I don't do tax law, so I can't comment, but maybe, maybe Councilman Stunsay for Ken.
I mean, the only thing I would say is that as far as the tax treatment issue, these facilities have been set up all over the United States in different cities, and they have been allowed to operate. I looked this weekend at several different cities and their regulations, and we had a good, healthy phone call with the attorneys on Friday to try to come up with something that everybody could live with. I think one thing that kept coming up repeatedly was the, in my conversations, where people were concerned about these turning into party pads or event centers. And I think it's New Orleans has a specific code that says that if you have two nuisance violations, your application, your special exception, is revoked. And so that's some of the good stuff that came out of our discussions on Friday. I think we still need to keep talking about that, but as far as the tax implications are concerned, I agree with you.
I just wanted to bring out the distinction between a passive rental activity and an active trader business when you have short-term lodging. There's a distinction, at least from the Internal Revenue Services perspective.
Well, in land use terms, it's transient lodging, at least under our-
And our ordinance considers that distinction in it. It talks about rentals of less than 30 days or as distinct from longer than 30 days. So that base discussion hasn't changed. There are just a couple of provisions that we're struggling over still.
So, Mark, can I ask you, because that's an interesting idea to me. I mean, instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, going after those properties that are a nuisance. So, I mean, if the problem is, which I've heard verbalized by the neighborhoods, they don't want parties, I mean, is there a way to tailor, did New Orleans-
There is. There is. And I think what's come out of this from our conversations on Friday is that, exactly what Eric said, we need to sit down with Kenny, and we need to look at these different things that we discussed on Friday, and we need to craft something that's going to satisfy the needs of our citizens.
So did New Orleans, so they revoke?
I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
And the goal here, Ed, is not to, not to prevent this, but to create some level of accountability and knowledge in the neighborhoods or notice. So, you know, there are just a couple of tweaks that I think if we, if we flip this upside down perhaps, and, there are just a couple of tweaks that we're working on. So, you know, I think the idea, for instance, of the nuisance issue makes a lot of sense. We probably want to put some kind of a time limit on it because you might be an operator for 10 years, and it might be possible for a very good operator to get, you know, two complaints. So I think there's just a lot of nuance, but we're really moving, I believe, in a very positive discussion that would, that would result in something that could be applied citywide so that we don't have any of these distinctions.
On behalf of the folks in Edgemere, we appreciate your time and attention to this matter, and we are certainly willing to work with the group in reaching some common ground.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Penner.
Jeff Penner, 1496 East Interstate Drive, Norman, Oklahoma, 73072. Mayor Holt, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. We respectfully, the Oklahoma City Hotel Association, ask your consideration to amend and add some teeth to this proposed home-share ordinance. I'd like to point out that less than 20% of Airbnb's business is true home-sharing, where the owner is present during the guest's stay. Overall, 81% of Airbnb's revenue nationwide, more than $4.6 billion, comes from whole-unit rentals where the owner is not present. Furthermore, over $1.8 billion, or 32%, of Airbnb's US revenue is not being generated by middle-class folks, but by multi-unit operators who rent out two or more entire home units. And even more concerning, this is the fastest-growing segment of Airbnb's business. The revenue derived from these multi-unit hosts in the 13 markets studied rose 89% year after year. So we're not talking about home-sharing. We're talking about a lodging business. Our association simply asks that they follow the same requirements that we as hotels do. At a previous hearing, several operators spoke, one even bringing their general manager to speak because they have several properties and need staff to oversee that large of an operation. Again, it's a lodging operation. Hotels have requirements from parking, code inspections, multiple tax collections, but one of the most important is that of consumer safety and protection. Today's ordinance does not address that. You have no dedicated revenue stream for the Oklahoma City County Health Department. They can't absorb this cost. They're short-staffed as it is, and you are not giving them the authority of right of entry. Therefore, they have no real power to investigate potential consumer complaints. We just simply ask that you please don't show preference over one segment or the other. Don't allow them to skate by regulations that we as the hospitality industry have to do. Just please, a level playing field, and we just ask that it be equitable and professional. Thank you very much for your time today.
Would you do me a favor? Would you, your prepared remarks, would you send that to me? Make a copy and send it to me?
I will, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Hopper.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Hopper. My office is at 3800 North Portland Avenue here in Oklahoma City. I am the president of the Oklahoma Hotel and Lodging Association, and I've also been asked to speak on behalf of the Asian American Hotel Owners Association, of which there are many, many members in Oklahoma City that own lodging properties. I'm not, my remarks are going to be very, very brief because I don't want to go over what Mr. Penner, who just spoke so eloquently, spoke about concerning the revenue that's generated by Airbnb and other home-sharing networks. I'll just say this. It was said earlier today during this hearing that if you all, as council members from Oklahoma City, decide that you want to regulate the home-sharing business in Oklahoma City contrary to what the national Airbnb group or international Airbnb group would have you do, that they might go out to the state Capitol or that they will go out to the state Capitol and try to preempt you from regulating the home-sharing network. I don't know about you, but if I sat where you sat, I would say, that sounds like a threat. And we're, I would think that the city council, that you as council members would say, you know what, we're going- know what, we're going to regulate this home-sharing network, it, to the best ability for what's good for the citizens of Oklahoma City. So, I would just tell you, and I will just tell you this, that the Oklahoma Hotel and Lodging Association is out at the state Capitol every single day that they're in session, and we monitor that kind of legislation on behalf of our members. And so, I'm not saying that we're always successful, but we would certainly be on your side to not let preemption happen for the city of Oklahoma City. The last thing I would say is, we commend Councilwoman Salier for the amendments that you have proposed about requiring true home sharing to be owner-occupied. We think that's a good idea, and if it's good for Heritage Hills and Edgemere Park, we believe that it would be good for the entire city of Oklahoma City. We're encouraged that this hearing is being held today and that the apparent, hopefully, that there will be no vote taken today, and that there are further discussions, so that we can get an ordinance that protects everybody's property rights. We think that's a good thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, Suzanne Broadbent.
Thank you. I am Suzanne Broadbent. I live in the Putnam Heights Historic District at 3625 North McKinley Avenue. Just a couple of things, I'll be very brief. You've heard from me before, I've also expressed the problems of change of use without notice and hearing. That's been taken seriously, I believe. But with regard to the amendment, which I don't think is going to be heard today, but I had talked with Councilwoman Salier last week about adding Putnam Heights, and I believe there was agreement to do that, maybe you're doing that oral motion if it comes up today.
We did discuss that, and I would have brought it up, but given the nature of the conversation that we all had on Friday and the posture to go ahead and defer this, I think that probably will not be necessary.
Okay, just didn't want us to fall-
It will not slip by if in case it is needed, but thank you.
Okay, just didn't want us to fall through the cracks. And yes, we welcome the opportunity to discuss further the ordinance. I have several ideas, which I shared with my councilmen and some other people at, as does everybody else. And so, we are welcoming the opportunity to sit down and discuss this. I believe we can craft an ordinance that everyone can live with, and we, it'll be protecting the public, it'll be protecting the homeowners. Our concern is neighborhood instability that would be created by too many or the wrong kind of home-sharing arrangements in our neighborhoods, and of course, change of use with or without notice is a concern. So, thank you for the opportunity, and we'll look forward to what comes up.
Thank you. Well, that was the last person who had signed up to speak.
All righty. Well, then, I guess I would just make a couple of comments. I really want to thank you all for coming down and continuing to work with us. This is a complicated issue, and I particularly want to thank the group that are non-owner-occupied folks that are here. You know, I truly do believe we have a collection in this city of excellent operators of these facilities, and you know, we talk about the health concerns and safety concerns and things, but we do need to remember that the way this particular industry works, there are ratings on a real-time basis that are provided both by the people that use the Airbnb facilities and by the operators who can rate the folks that use them. So, there is a, you know, very akin to Uber and Lyft and, you know, ride-sharing opportunities, there is real-time feedback about cleanliness and safety and all of the things that we're concerned about. So, I think what we're trying to accomplish here is, is find a good solution for, for everyone, both the non-owner-occupied facilities and those that are owner-occupied, where, you know, the capacity to, to help pay your taxes by renting your garage apartment is also an option, but to protect our neighborhoods from frat parties or event centers cropping up in their neighborhood. I really believe it's possible. We're going to ask you all to help us, continue to help us, and have some further discussion. So, given those comments, I would move that we defer this.
Second.
Right, so, so it's not, it's a movement for deferral of 9I-1, 9I-2, 9J-1, 9J-2, all in one motion. We've got a motion and a second, and what is the date, next meeting?
Can we go out 30 days? Two meetings?
So, it'd be 10/23?
Are you all okay? 10/23? A month away?
October 23rd.
Four weeks out?
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, 10/23.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the mo-? Oh, yes, we've got some, sorry.
I have a question. I've heard the term "everyone" mentioned. Who is "everyone" that will be included in any discussions between now and when this is heard again? And let me, let me put some, will it be, will hotel operators be included in the discussion?
Most definitely.
Absolutely.
Okay, so "everyone" is an all-inclusive term?
It is an all-inclusive term.
Thank you.
Including you, councilman.
One more question. I, I think the threat of state legislative preemption is real, but only, I mean, based on track record, they've done it to us over and over and over. I think you could make an argument that Uber is a more public health threat than Airbnb and the fact that they came in and deprived municipalities of the ability to regulate. I think that's, I mean, I think the threat is from the legislature, and while I appreciate the hotel lobby's prowess, conservative and libertarian organizations like the OCPA have made it very clear, they don't want infringement on private property rights. And so, I think there is a risk that if this is too onerous and too complicated, that we get preempted. And so, I just ask maybe that Jane Abraham and others that are tied in with the legislature be involved in those discussions.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. That brings us to 9K, which was already deferred upfront. This is the, that was the scooter-sharing ordinance, and we will, we just saw that this was a busy agenda and probably just needed more time to work on that, so that's currently scheduled for October 9th. And that brings us to 9L-1 and 2. This is an ordinance that has been debated at two previous council meetings, as per our normal procedure on that, and Chief City, I believe, is here to maybe discuss the amendment that he would like to make.
Yes, thank you, council. On what has been presented to you before on the amendments or the changes in the marijuana ordinance, discovered that really it needed to cover two different species of plants that contain THC, so we just wanted to make sure that it covered all of that, so that's the change, one of the changes that's made. The other change is that in the medical marijuana, new medical marijuana rules that are coming out, the person has to have his license on his person. It'd be very difficult for officers to, to try to determine whether or not that person had a license if they didn't have it on their person. So, what we've included is that in our ordinance, that if they don't have that license on their person, even though they say they may have and have possession of marijuana, that they would still be cited, because that basically mirrors what's in the, in the state law. That's on top of reducing what we, what we proposed before, which was the lowering of the fines that would allow us to cite and release in the field.
Okay.
Your honor, just a comment, and it's not directed towards you, Chief City, but just, there is an article in the newspaper within the past week that compared the proposed fine for possession of marijuana with some other traffic violation or something, and it just seemed a little interesting to see that this fine is below the amount of some other type of, which some people may perceive to be a less problematic type of, of a situation. So, I would just ask that we possibly look at, do a review of all of our fines, not just for marijuana, but just across the board in light of these proposed changes, to look at all of the fines, the amount of fines, and see if they seem reasonable in terms of comparing them with other violations.
David, is that, I think you were talking, I think it was talking about the, maybe the next one, where if you don't pay your streetcar fare, it's $500?
Yeah, $500 for getting on the streetcar without paying your fare and $400 for marijuana possession. It just seemed a little out of line, just personal opinion.
And mayor and council, if I could just comment on that briefly, what you have before you in both of those ordinances is the maximum fine, $500 for the streetcar, $400 for the marijuana. Unless council were to set a different amount in Chapter 33, that is, the amount that you could go up to the counter at courts to pay to close out your case without ever going into court, unless you change that amount, both of those will fall, excuse me, into the miscellaneous category, and the total fine and cost then that could be paid at the court clerk's counter is about $178 for both of those.
And I appreciate that. I'm just suggesting, and Ed, thank you for sharing that, it just seems, first blush, that that seems a little out of line to have potential fines for getting on the streetcar without paying your fare, exceeding that of having possession of marijuana without any appropriate license or other exceptions to the rule. So, just saying, it seems like a good time, not today, not next week, but in light of this, that we review all of our fines across the board.
And maybe it's a legitimate thing, when we get to the next item, maybe you want to talk about that maximum fine for the streetcar fare.
Well, chief, I think David brings up a real concern of mine, and that would be as it relates to this particular ordinance. Can a person be cited in the same stop for possession of marijuana and also paraphernalia, which would then drive that fine up substantially more than what we're just talking about here in terms of just citing a five? Could, yes, sir, it could be. It could, it's two separate violations. I mean, the state law, there still is a state law that makes possession of marijuana a violation and paraphernalia a violation, so there is state law for both of those. So, these mirror that state law, so yes, they are separate and they could be. We try to discourage a lot of times stacking like traffic tickets and those types of things, you know, so it's one of those things where they, there's a possibility they could be written to tickets, but also, you know, a judge could, a judge could lower the $400 fine, a judge could dismiss the fine. Same thing with the paraphernalia, but I would hate to do, completely do away with, with something that is, right now, it's in state law. So, and all we're doing is mirroring what that state law is. We're just reducing that fine so it's not a court of record, and they don't have to go, be put in jail, and they don't have to go to court. So, if it is state law, then it cannot be amended in this municipality then? Well, we can, we usually, what we do is if, instead of, because if we don't, if you don't pass an ordinance for paraphernalia, let's say, we do away with the paraphernalia ordinance, because I think we can, what you end up having is that if you have an officer, by, by law, he could put that person in jail for a violation of state law, because he can't write a citation. So, now that person goes to jail and has the potential of being filed on in state court. That still occurs now, but you have more likelihood of officers being able to write a citation for the violation and releasing him in the field versus putting him in jail on a state charge. But I, I don't think we want to do away with the paraphernalia aspect, but it, it, it would seem like if, if you're going to write them for one, you shouldn't write for the other, you know? If you're going to cite them for possession, then don't cite them for paraphernalia. I mean, it just, I'm not suggesting that we do away with the paraphernalia, but if that's what, you know, they're guilty of. Right. And rather than having both of those, which seems to compound the complexity of people who are dealing with particularly these citations, given the constraints of finances and other things, that it could be $400 for possession, $400 for paraphernalia, that's $800 from often people who can least afford that kind of hit financially. So, that's my question. Right. Well, it's, again, officers have discretion on any of those citations they write, just like they do with traffic citations. Usually, an officer won't stack citations. They won't stack one like, well, you, you were speeding 10 miles over the speed limit, and then you also did an illegal right turn. Usually, they will write one or the other. Now, that's not to say they can't, because it's still two violations. So, depending on the circumstances, in many cases, will depend on whether or not two citations are written, that end, with that individual. Let's say an officer's had dealings with the same individual over and over again, you know, and he's trying to discourage that continued violation, he might write for paraphernalia if he has it. The problem is, is that if it's a violation of the law, I can't tell a police officer not to enforce the law, and I won't do that. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to make it much more fair if the officer is going to enforce that, much more fair on the individual. That individual still has a right to post bond and go to court and request some type of leniency or some type of explanation why he, he or she should not be charged with that paraphernalia on top of possession of marijuana. I, you know, I don't agree. I've never, I've always struggled with the paraphernalia law in the first place, just for the fact it's paraphernalia, and in many cases, there's, there are drug substances in the pipe or in the paraphernalia that could be tested, it would cause a possession charge as well. So, but it's still on the books, it's still a law, we're just trying to reduce that fine. And again, in many cases, officers will, won't write two citations for something like that, but again, it's, it's a violation of the law, and that's what we ask officers to enforce.
Chief, what if, what if we made the penalty for the paraphernalia just a nominal amount, $50? That would give the officers even more discretion, they could write the more expensive possession ticket or the nominal, I mean, presumably, you could have paraphernalia that didn't, that was brand-new, that you just bought, that you didn't have anything in it.
Right.
And you could still get, what are your thoughts?
That would be your decision. That would be the council's decision as to whether or not you want to set the fine lower on something like paraphernalia. I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that. It would hard for me to be opposed to that, when I've just told you, I've always had issues with that paraphernalia in the first place. So, that, that would be a council decision.
And in your opinion, that would, that would potentially be more protective than doing away with the paraphernalia altogether, because then you might be faced with a state charge.
It still gives officers an option of writing them for that paraphernalia, okay? And I think, and I think that we still should have, since it's on the books, state law, still give them the option of being able to write a citation to that individual for the possession of that, because again, and even with the $50, officers technically could put them in. Now, we can, we can, we can provide guidance to the officers through, through our directives and things on the police department as to what, you know, what we, what we enforce and how we enforce those types of things, our misdemeanor charges anyway. So, technically, if they put them in jail on that state charge, even with the $50 fine, they're legally within their right to do that, enforcing the law. So, having some type of fine, whether it's $50, I certainly, like I said, would not oppose, I would not oppose that. I would, I would oppose it if you lowered, wanted to lower the marijuana a little bit, because I think that's fair, and I still think we need to send a message about the harms and dangers of the use of marijuana, because it, you know, like I said, I'm not, I'm opposed to legalizing marijuana, and we have a law now that's medical, that's pretty liberal in and of itself, so I think it's important that we still hold the line on the fact that it's, it's federally an illegal substance. By state law, it's still legal, illegal substance, and I think we should, we should also consider it a serious drug for, basically for our children's sake. I think the abuse there for, for our kids and the message we send is highly, highly important, that our leadership send that message. So, that's, so the fine, I mean, as far as how much the fine would be on paraphernalia, if that's the wishes of the council, then that's, that's a policy decision.
Well, I, I mean, as someone who had a couple of decades, very destructive relationship with marijuana, it absolutely is addictive. I was addicted. I want to, there, there is problems with marijuana.
You weren't, you weren't addicted to the paraphernalia?
I wasn't.
And that's my point, I mean, that's one of my points.
Right. So, I think that, that message needs to be sent, but we're also talking about something that the entire country of Canada has legalized, that I think is a statistical certainty, that it will snowball, and eventually, it will be legal here. And so, it's heartbreaking, the idea that we've put people in prison, or that we could, potentially, people could be put in prison, and I just want to express my gratitude one more time for you bringing this forward, and I think it's a great step by the council to adopt this.
I'm, I'm not ready to concede that it's going to be legal in the state of Oklahoma, but I, I do recognize-
but I do recognize the real impact that it has on, on families. And the cycle that we're getting out of, I think, is to be commended that we've taken this step. I just feel very strongly that, you know, if you're gonna cite for one, you know, it's kind of different. So, if, in fact, for legal, for Kenny, reducing then the fine for paraphernalia seems to be the right step, since we can't, you know, I think it's illegal and it needs to be, then we have that kind of leeway, Kenny, is that correct?
Yes.
To put a limit on what that is for paraphernalia, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Cindy, could you give a brief comment about how we've reduced the county jail population through efforts of the municipal court system? Through the indigent hearings, et cetera?
We've reduced the population in several ways. One is that the presiding judge, every day, from the court administrators, getting a report of everybody that got put into jail the day before. So, she can look at that report and bring those people over, hopefully, that next day after they've been booked into jail. And so, we're drastically reducing the number of days. The other thing that is significant is that she has scheduled eight indigency hearings a week, Monday through Thursday, I believe they're in the morning and the afternoon. And so, for folks who have charges against them and say that they can't pay, they come over and they get a full-blown hearing. Again, the court administrators' clerks sit down with those folks, help them figure out the paperwork, the affidavits, and that sort of thing, so that they're not struggling on their own to figure all that out, and then a full hearing is held on their fiscal situation.
But as a result of those indigency hearings, last year alone, we saved, what, roughly $500, $550,000 that we did not have to pay the county jail?
I believe that's correct. And we'll soon, I think, be saving more through police procedures that are being worked through now about field releases, but I don't want to get ahead of the chief on talking about all that, but I think we've got one more big step that we're getting ready to take.
Thank you.
I would like to say, Mayor and Council, if you're interested in reducing the paraphernalia fine, I would ask that you let us send through a different ordinance for Chapter 33 for that amount that gets paid up at the counter, and the judges generally follow that in the courtroom, too. If we change the maximums too much, it gets really confusing with the number of citations that we process, for the prosecutors to remember how much those maximum fines are. We're used to $200 on drug paraphernalia, because it's been that way since time out of mind as a maximum. And I also want to tell you that in our court, maximums hardly are ever seen. We just, at least in the Class A offenses, we might go up there sometimes on the jury division charges, but if you are interested in reducing it, I would love to send a different ordinance through and let you say how much you would like for people to be able to pay at the court clerk's counter to close out their case on that. And I'd be happy to put that together for you.
Ken, could, could, I just heard that line, but I really would like to make an amendment, you know, to this. What is the best way to go about doing that?
If you want.
I'd like to put forward an amendment and have the council to, you know, weigh in on it.
Then you would have to, to do it on this ordinance, you'd have to move to amend the penalty from $200 to $50, the maximum penalty, but then you'd be changing it to You can do that.
And, and what is the benefit, again, of waiting to do a whole nother ordinance?
The biggest benefit is, we have a total of two codebooks that are full of violations that we prosecute in our court. I have six prosecutors that do about 150,000 citations a year, and if we have to memorize different maximum penalties on a lot of different ordinances, and I'm not saying this is a lot or this one thing will turn the tide, but if we, what we've tried to do over time is to have the maximum for Class A offenses set at the statutory maximum, which is $500. And then there's a table in Chapter 33 that counsel can go in and say, if there are specific violations that they're concerned about, they can set the, you can set the amount that you want a person to be able to pay for those Class A offenses as something less than what the maximum is. So, a traffic offense may be $80. It's still got a potential maximum of 500, but you can come to the counter and pay your $80 plus your court costs. And so, all I'm saying is on this, if you want to reduce that amount on the paraphernalia, let's do it in that table that is there and available for counsel to do that, rather than setting different maximum fines. It's an ease-of-use function when you're processing the number of citations that we have.
Cindy, in that table, what would that number now be for paraphernalia?
It would fall into miscellaneous, and I, is that $80, I think? Something like $80. With the court cost, it would turn out to be about a total of 178, which also includes state mandated fees.
So, we also have someone who has signed up to speak, so maybe before we plunge into amendments and votes, I would like to respect that. I might bring her up, if that's okay. Ally Shin? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Good morning, Ally Shin. I live at 2641 Northwest 34th, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73112. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm speaking today on behalf of the ACLU of Oklahoma in support of these proposed revisions. I want to first commend Police Chief Bill Citi of his support for this proposal and his comments in support of a code that realizes that an arrest is not always, and in fact, may rarely be appropriate, when encountering marijuana offenses. If adopted, this ordinance would not only protect the rights of patients under State Question 788, but it would also signal to the people of Oklahoma, who have clearly shown their favor for reform, that our capital city is ready to move toward a more sensible drug policy. We hope today's proposal is the first step of many toward drug policy reform. If we truly wish to be a city that leads, we must be willing to honestly examine our failings of our criminal justice system and move toward a system that prioritizes decriminalization, decarceration, and one that addresses the stark racial disparities that are so present in every aspect of our justice system. Thank you for considering this proposal today. We hope that it is the first of many steps forward. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have the ordinance, we have an amendment that Chief Citi is proposing that we adopt, and then we have what sounds like the start of an amendment. Is that something you want to pursue, the amendment you, you described, you've been hinting at?
I guess what I, what I would like to do is defer it back to Kenny and have you to come back at the next council meeting, okay? About the best way to pursue it.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then we have the-
I assume that we adopt this ordinance today, and then you come back with an amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that becomes a three-meeting process, just so you know. I mean, if it can be done here quick, I mean, you know, you might, you might want to do it.
That's a completely different chapter, you can't do that.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
You can only, let me, let me say, you can amend this maximum fine in the code. I mean, I sound like I'm arguing against Cindy. She's talking about a practical problem. You can amend the maximum fine in the code if you want to, if that's really what you want to do.
In, in this action today, would you then want to come back and do like, sort of a cleanup?
She would have to come back with another ordinance to change it in Chapter 33.
In the meantime, would that be problematic, that you have two different amounts and?
This would probably override that, but-
If you want to go ahead and do it today, and if council's will is to set it at a $50 maximum fine, you know, we'll, we'll learn it, we'll do it, and we'll follow it. If, as Councilman Greenwell has indicated earlier, we want to look at fines overall, that is something I would like for council to keep in mind, is that it's 150,000 total citations a year generally that we're trying to track.
So, Cindy, I get, I don't understand how it would change, what would, what change would happen on the table in the case that we were to amend this today to a $50 max fine?
So, Class A offenses are our lower misdemeanor. Generally speaking, they max out at $500 fines. That table says, if you want to come in and you don't want to go into court, you don't want to see a judge, you don't want a trial, you can go to the court administrator's counter, the court clerk's counter, and you can pay this much money to close out your case. And then what you have are certain things that are identified, you know, a disorderly conduct violation, a speeding 1 to 10 miles an hour violation, certain things are outlined, maybe about 10 or 12 things, and then there's a miscellaneous category. And so, it sets what that payable amount is going to be if you just want to go in and, and close out your case.
Okay. So, if we were to change this ordinance today to 50, what would the table say relative to paraphernalia?
It would trump that table, because it would be less than anything that the table provides. So, we would just have to look over at this, this specific ordinance that you have in front of you today and say, 50 is the most that can be charged, whether you're in court or out of court.
So, if I wanted to go to the window and pay for my citation for paraphernalia, I would pay $50?
Right.
Plus, plus, plus?
$50 plus court costs.
Yeah, plus, plus whatever-
That's right.
-other fees are also attached to that.
But if you decide to come to court and fight it, then the prosecutors, the judge, the clerk inside the courtroom have got to remember, it's only $50 plus court costs in here, too.
I personally don't see a problem waiting for two weeks to just assist from a, an administrative process to get everything in alignment.
Well, it'll be, yeah, just to clarify, it'll be two weeks to the first meeting, then the hearing, then the, just so everybody understands.
People just have to be a little bit more careful in their illegal drug use.
Easier said than done.
I want to put forth a motion that we consider the $50 fine today. I may not be here long enough to see the whole process if we continue to drag it out, so I'm putting that forward for us as a recommendation. So, I'll move that, $50 max.
Okay, so you've got that motion, is there a second?
Second.
You've got a second? Any discussion on that? Okay.
So, I'm clear, this is just as to paraphernalia?
This, yes.
You have what you need, Kenny, to interpret the motion.
Yes, $50 maximum fine for paraphernalia.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the amendment to the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes, one, two, three, seven to two. Okay.
We still may, this is done, but we still may bring back an ordinance to clean it up at a future time.
Got it. We appreciate that. Okay, so, that also leaves the amendment that's actually on our agenda, 9L1. Does anybody want to propose adoption of that amendment? Okay? We've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And then finally, we have 9L2, the ordinance on final hearing. We've got a, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, and everybody on your work.
Cindy? Cindy? Stay for the next item.
All right, this brings us to 9M. So, this is, these next three items all relate to M, N, and O, all relate to the street car. They are all also on their third hearing, and so this would be the potential passage today. And M is, in fact, the previously referred to fine for failure to pay your street car fare. And as I was reviewing the packet, I just now, I was reminded that this is actually, $500 is exactly the, as I understand it, the existing fine for bus service and is just being extended to street car. But is this something we want to revisit, I suppose, perhaps?
That's correct. And again, it's maximum. That doesn't mean that that's the fees that are assessed, that's the maximum as we have on the Class A offenses.
I would propose, just from an appearance standpoint, and I don't mind waiting on this one for a couple of weeks, if it helps from an administrative standpoint to possibly lower the maximum fine to, say, $200 from 500.
So, what are the practical aspects of that? Is that easy to accomplish today, or would that be better to defer this item?
That's why I asked Cindy to stay.
If you lower the maximum, the maximum, you might as well do it today. If, you know, the amount, again, that you would come pay at the counter, if you didn't take that kind of action or change it in any way, would be a total of $178, which, again, would include court costs and state mandated fees.
Yeah, I would suspect in, at least as it relates to riding the bus, a person who fails to pay probably is doing that out of a lack of funds and not, I mean, you've got the driver right there, and you've been reminded, hey, this is-
Councilman, let me, let me also say this to you, if you lower the maximum to $200, that's still not going to change the amount that you would come pay at the counter, because, again, it would fall into that miscellaneous category in that table, which is a total of $178.
How could you lower that to, say, $100?
I would need to, if you're talking about what you paid rather than the maximum, I would need to bring another ordinance through to you.
Yeah. I would say, let's try to defer that then, because-
Defer this item.
Yeah, I just hate to pursue someone failing to pay their proper fare and making them pay up to $178 to rectify that. That just seems excessive.
Although that is parallel with what the ordinance is on buses today.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I would make that proposed amendment applicable to both bus service and street car service.
Here's something I could perhaps offer. I think, knowing the presiding judge as I do-
Yes.
If you wanted to go ahead with the ordinance today, and if it seemed to be council's will to come, to have us come back with an ordinance with a lower amount, I could talk to her about enacting a standing order for the interim until that other ordinance goes through to set the fine at a, at a lower amount, so it doesn't automatically fall into that miscellaneous category.
Yeah, that'd be fine with-
But this would be including an amendment, or just pass the ordinance as it's written today?
If you passed it through as it is, I just kind of need a little bit direction on, on what amount you'd like to see that at as a, as a body.
David, can you give us some kind of, you know, what you would like to see that be?
Yeah. Not, not to exceed $100.
And why, and why not go forward today?
Oh, no, no, I'm okay if, if Mr. Richards says they can work with this idea, and it doesn't create an administrative issue, I'm okay with moving forward today with paying at the window, but I don't know if we can get that accomplished today.
You're going, you would amend the ordinance today with a, with a lower amount, that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, not to exceed, say, $100, whether they went to court, plus court costs, or paid at the window without court costs.
So, I think personally, I'm more interested in like, how much they have to pay when they go to the window?
Yeah.
And learning that, you know, $80 equals $178, and what does $50 equal? You know?
Well, again, it depends on how you word it. If you set a penalty not to exceed $100, then-
No, I'm talking about in your, in your, your chart.
No, I'm talking about in your chart. So not the max, but what someone pays when they come to the window and says, oh, yeah, I did this. What do they pay? For miscellaneous, right?
For miscellaneous, it's a total of $178.
Which is $80 of that is the penalty, right?
Why don't you come up here? The court administrators are more familiar with the breakdown than I am.
Well, she's making her way to the podium. If I could just point out, there is no urgency to adopt this failure-to-pay fine today. And it's, thank you. And it's 1203. I mean, we could, it is a lot of business left, and we could easily defer this and work through it and vote on it at a future meeting.
I'm fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just get my question first?
Sure, sure.
Just one.
Yeah.
Okay, so you got to pay $178 total, right?
That's correct.
How much of that is the penalty?
It depends on what the fine is set at, which is the fine, and then the court costs, and then the state mandated fees of $30.
The miscellaneous, oh, I'll have to get that for you.
Oh, that's fine. Because I was just making the point, I would rather defer it so I could get a better understanding.
Let's just defer it.
Kind of the breakdown. If y'all can produce that
Easiest thing in the world.
If you can produce that chart that shows what you pay when you go to the window, that would be awesome.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for a deferral. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to 9N. This is also related to the streetcar. Which, what specifically was this about?
This prohibits turning in front of streetcars and interfering with the movement of streetcars.
Okay.
I'd move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9O, also on streetcars.
Noise.
I have a very quick question on noise, very quick. In the memo, it says there's a list of entities that have an exemption. And we were talking about the JFK neighborhood. Do we know if that plant has an exemption to noise or not? Is it on that list? Or where could we see that list of entities that have an exemption to the noise ordinance?
Cindy's a noise expert. Seriously, though, I think it's in the code. I believe it's in the code. I don't
It is in the code. We have like a noise, noise something zone, and it includes like hospitals, nursing homes.
Would the plant that smashed the cars and does it, would that be included or no?
Y'all are really, you have the questions today. I have to go back and revisit the ordinance, I'm sorry.
I found a device, I think online, that does measure decibels. You can just leave it there for 24 hours. I mean, I just
The problem with that, Councilman, is we don't know where that noise is coming from. It could be lightning, a thunder that puts off the noise at that point in time. So unless you witness that, just having a record that at some time in the morning that it went off, we don't know, it's probably not going to hold up in court that it really came from that area. You can't have a direct correlation. Yes, the devices are available, but it may not be something that's applicable in court.
That would hold up in court. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, so we're still on 9O. I don't believe we have a motion.
I'd move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9P. These are some traffic commission items. 9P1, removing metered parking on the south side of East Sheridan, et cetera. Councilman Cooper. Councilman Cooper, 9P1 is in your ward, a traffic commission item.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We've got 9P2, removing the reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the west side of South Mickey Mantle. Okay, Councilman Cooper.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P3, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the west side of South Mickey Mantle.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P4, removing the open carriage stand on the east side of South Mickey Mantle Drive, et cetera. Councilman Cooper.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We've got 9P5, establishing an open carriage stand on the east side of South Mickey Mantle, et cetera. Councilman Cooper.
Move for adoption.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9Q. This is the second of third meeting in our process to change ordinances. This is the public hearing portion. Remind us what this is in reference to?
This is the Lincoln Boulevard Corridor Sub District modifications, and Lisa Cronister gave a presentation on this
Okay.
two weeks ago.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the public hearing portion, reserved for item 9Q? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to 9R1, ordinance to be introduced. So this is set for public hearing on October 9th and a final hearing on October 23rd. Mr. City Manager, what is this in? Oh, this is the adult novelty shops. Are we expected to go into executive session?
We are not.
Not unless someone has additional questions from what we have previously discussed. Dan's here to tell you what this would do, and Eric's here on behalf of the
Okay, maybe we'll start with Dan, and then we'll go to Eric. And then at any time, if somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session, this is a pending litigation, and that is the right we have, so. Dan?
Mayor and Council, we're talking about the adult novelty shop ordinance. It's been on the books for about 20 years. To my knowledge, there's never been a citation written on it till recently. Which brought into concern the validity of the ordinances. The impression of our office that the ordinance as written is probably overbroad and unconstitutional. Therefore, we amended the ordinance to provide definitions to make the ordinance more clear. We asked, we added a minimum or a maximum percentage of adult novelty space you can put in your store before you're considered an adult novelty shop. Before, there was no maximum. If you had one novelty device in your store, you were considered an adult bookshop, adult novelty shop. And the problem with that is it runs, it would literally enforce, it would apply to Walgreens and CVS, places like that. Also, we added a provision that prohibits anyone 18 years or younger from being on the premises. That is in line with the purpose of the ordinance, to protect children and youths. And finally, we amended the ordinance to revise a provision that adult novelty items cannot be in the window or they're subject to the view by the public. And that's the amendments that we've made to the ordinance.
For the record, Eric Groves, attorney, 3601 North Classen Boulevard. Three law firms were involved in negotiating this ordinance with the municipal councillor's office, my firm, Groves and Associates, Mark Hendrickson's firm, and John Coyle's firm. We put a lot of time and effort into reaching what we believe is a workable arrangement that will avoid litigation. So we urge you to introduce this, and then, of course, ultimately, we'll urge you to enact it. So if there are any questions, we're here to answer them.
Well, I have some questions. I mean, so a couple of months ago, we had a resolution that would repeal this ordinance because it was arbitrary and capricious and overly
Overbroad.
vague. I mean, there were some concerns brought up that the property owners didn't do their due diligence on zoning before they signed the lease or bought the property, but the council voted that down, and I didn't hear at that time that your opinion was that it was overly broad and vague. So I guess I'm
It's based on the state, it's actually based on state law. So, I mean, it had been taken essentially directly out of the state statute. So the state law may have some infirmities too.
My concern is that it's still arbitrary and capricious, just like it was two months ago when we talked about it. And I don't think that these, this proposed revision solves any of that. I mean, what constitutes one of these devices is still kind of nebulous. I mean, what body part, what, you know, I don't, it's just, it's just too vague. And I don't think it satisfies this Chicago and Morales case that was cited, that would now enable ordinary people to understand what conduct it prohibits and to encourage arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement. I mean, to me, we came up with a, I understand how if you have a certain percentage of the store, a certain percentage of the square footage, that makes it more concrete, and that gives you some buffer against the constitutional attacks or unconstitutional attacks. But the idea that we chose 25% where Tulsa, sorry, thanks, where Tulsa has 10%, for example, makes me think that we just pulled this number out of a hat, and the reason we're choosing 25% is because that's what makes these lawsuits go away, as opposed to any data-driven empirical research that says 25% has more of a public benefit than, say, 10% or 15% or any other number.
Well, it's a compromise, Councilman, that's all. It's a compromise between the people who are regulated and the regulators, and it avoids expensive and protracted litigation. You know, we're not here to argue the merits of the ordinance itself. Professional opinions will vary on its constitutional infirmities. We just want to stay in business, and we are content with the ordinance as it is. That's why we ask you to introduce it.
And I appreciate the compromise, but the people who aren't involved in that conversation, who are deprived of the ability to be involved in that compromise, are the property owners 10, 20, 30 years from now. They're not, when maybe they get cited, because they don't reach this 25% threshold. I mean, I appreciate that the stores today and the council today are coming up with an arbitrary and capricious settlement.
Well, I don't know that it's arbitrary. It's not data-driven, but it is not arbitrary to us because it makes it possible for us to function, and it makes it possible for the city to regulate. And it's a heck of a lot better than going to court and litigating all this. I mean, this is the way business should be done. This is a compromise.
So 20, or 10%, like they have in Tulsa, that wouldn't work?
No.
Okay.
No. 25% is the deal. We're happy with it. Municipal councillor's happy with it.
There we go.
And the lawsuit that was already filed will be dismissed. Yes? So, of course, when this comes to final hearing, it has to be approved, and then we're done. So we urge you to introduce this and follow through on it in a final hearing.
Right.
So thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you. Councilman Greenwell?
Just based upon call and experience, anytime you get three law firms to agree on something, I think it's wise to move forward and take that suggestion.
Okay. The councilman is correct on that, yes.
All right, we have a motion to introduce the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion today? Okay, seeing none, cast your votes. The ordinance is introduced. Let's see, this brings us to 9S1, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures as listed here, items A through D on page 24 of the written agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the public hearing portion? Seeing none. I've got a motion for item 9S2, the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9T1, public hearing regarding unsecured structures as itemized here, items A through S minus item P, which was stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on these items listed here? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for item T2, a resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9U1, the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, items A through P. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution at 9U2.
Resolut.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to page 26, 9V1. This is a public hearing on 9V2, which is the resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2019 budget. We will have a hearing, and we will also consider this today, correct?
Correct. Craig Freeman gave a presentation on this two weeks ago. One of the primary things is providing the funding for the Native American Cultural Center.
Okay, so seeing that this is a listed public hearing at 9V1, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for 9V2. We've got a motion and a second for the resolution. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at 9W1, public hearing on 9W2, a resolution to be introduced and set for final hearing on October 9th, amending the city council resolution regarding the public safety tax, and I believe you
Kenny Suttl is here to give us a short presentation on this item.
Very quickly, each year at the end of the budget process, we bring forward to council a plan on how we're going to spend the police and fire sales tax. The budget is broken down into different projects with cost estimates for each of those projects, and that's to ensure that the monies are spent on the purposes consistent with the original ballot and the 1993 general entry judgment. So at the end of the year, we review to see what the actual expenditures are and make sure that they were consistent with what council adopted. So in working through that, one of the projects did exceed the original estimate, and that was the project to fund the additional firefighters, the 202 positions. So, you know, the primary reason for that was that the salary increases were a little above what we expected when we started that, the budget process. So again, to reiterate, this didn't, we didn't exceed the overall budget in the fire sales tax fund, but just the estimate on that project in that resolution that you all saw in June of 2017. So since that purpose was listed on the original ballot, we didn't feel this was any sort of violation or anything, but in working with the auditor's office, we just wanted to come back and bring this to you as amendment to notify you that the estimates were slightly higher. It was about $1 million higher, which is about a 4% change for those 202 firefighters. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kenny? All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion of this item, 9W1? Seeing none, I would, I guess we're just going to vote to introduce the resolution.
Move for adoption.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9X, resolution approving master plan for landscape and hardscape improvements to the north side of the Oklahoma River. And I believe this is tied, is this also tied as well to the next item?
It is.
Okay. 9Y, resolution approving a request from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation to name an approximately 3.5 mile section of the North Oklahoma River Trail, et cetera. So I believe we have a presentation.
We do. I see Nancy Anthony standing, but Brian Doherty is also here in the
Brian had to go on to another meeting where it needed a quorum, so. Oh, you're here. You're back. All right, great. Well, thank you all very much, and thank you for your patience in putting up with all this. And so we are very pleased today to say that we intend to, as part of this, to spend about half a million dollars to plant 1,000 trees between Harvey and Portland on the north side of the river. We're going, in addition to that, we are going to put 50 benches. We're going to plant some grasses and some wildflowers. Hopefully, we'll both cut down on the city's mowing obligations as well as reduce some of the erosion that might be occurring. We think with that will be a wonderful addition to really make that side of the river very usable. It'll be part of the celebration of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation's 50th anniversary. We're very pleased about presenting that. Hopefully, that you will approve it and approve the name of the trail to be Oklahoma City Community Foundation River Trails. So that's our request to you today, and we look forward to being able to accomplish that, and appreciate all the help that we've gotten from the Parks Department and everyone at the city in accomplishing this. And Brian can answer any questions.
Great. I appreciate the speed with which you delivered that message. Okay, so
9X.
9X, we've got a motion from Councilwoman Tyho.
Yes.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And I would entertain a motion for 9Y.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
I should first ask, and then you.
Okay, now we're at 9Z, resolution adopting the September 2018 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Project Implementation Plan and approving allocation of Better Streets, Safer Cities Sales Tax Funds. And this has a presentation.
It is. Eric Gwinger is here to update us. We have, this is the sales tax approved last September. We've had a lot of progress. We've had a lot of public engagement. The board that you all have appointed has been in this knee-deep, neck-deep. They're all about it. We've had a lot of process, and Eric's going to give us an update at this point.
Thank you. So we're pleased to present this morning. There's a lot of work that's been done by staff from Public Works, Planning, and Parks, and of course, our Citizens Advisory Board has been very engaged having monthly meetings since we began the program in January. And so what we're presenting to you today is an update to the implementation plan, very similar to what you've seen on the previous MAPS projects. We followed a very similar format where those projects are budgeted, they go through the meeting process, allocations are made, and so today, what you're approving is a new set of projects and additional budget authority for us as monies are collected to then spend those collected funds towards the projects that I'm getting ready to show you. This is just a program summary, just really outlining the program. We've got the $240 million program, but it does break down into these five different categories, with street resurfacing being the largest at $168 million. We've previously approved in the plan in April, a number of street projects, but what you're going to see in the plan today and with the amendment are categories being populated in streetscapes, sidewalks, trails, and bicycle facilities. So with your approval today, we'll be working in all five categories. This is what that implementation plan looks like, and I think you were provided a copy in your packet. It's also one that's going to be made available online upon your approval today. The one approved in April is already available, but today, we would update that with the newest version, but this is what the cover of that report looks like. Not only does it include the projects themselves, but the budgets, and we're starting to forecast the timeline of projects as well with a lot of work underway. So we do anticipate additional projects. What I will say with the update today, this does not fully authorize the full $240 million. You're approving about a $78 million amendment to a plan that already had about $50 million in the April, so we're approaching now about the halfway point of authorizations on the total amount to be collected. This is the current plan. Again, I mentioned it was in April, it had 16 early start, 57 arterial, and one resurfacing project. And then today is the update, and so we're adding additional arterial, additional residential, and then new projects or street enhancements, sidewalks. We did have one early start trail, you might recall, the Burt Cooper Trail was approved as an early start, but we're adding additional trails and then also bicycle infrastructure. So these are what those project lists look like, and I know that the print on this is really small, but as we kind of go through these very quickly, this is the arterial street resurfacing projects. We currently are looking to add 27 new projects for a total value of $24 million, and here you can see how they're dispersed across the city. So these are not all projects, these are just the 24 additional projects that are being added into that plan, but we're looking to add those in all wards. Again, we're looking at a pavement rating system and some methodologies that were previously approved to make sure that we're taking care of the worst streets. I will say that we have included some additional bond-funded projects in this arterial list, so the advisory board did identify that there are needs from the bond program, streets that are in very bad condition that need to be replaced sooner than the bond program can actually get them onto the list, and so they've exercised that. Again, you might recall that was done with the 16 early start projects. There are three additional residential projects that are being added for a total of $6.5 million here, and so as we continue to work, we're working again on those worst residential areas first. We still have all the bond projects, and I can bring to you for further information a composite map, one that shows all those projects. I will tell you that that's actually available online today. If you were to go to OKCGOV, follow the links to project updates under the Public Works Department, you will be clicking on a map that if you look in your area, you'll see not only the '07 remaining projects, but the 2017 bond and the 2017 sales tax, plus all city projects, all on one map. So you'll see all those improvements, and it doesn't have to be just streets, it could be parks, police, fire, libraries, transit, anything that the city's working on. Moving to street enhancement projects, this is probably where the plan makes the most impact, and again, looking at a lot of the work that Planning had done under Aubrey and a lot of the planning staff and Plan OKC, BikeWalk Plan, these are the recommendations coming from all of those resources, and so you're seeing the first eight streetscape projects under the sales tax. What makes these a little bit unique is that we're actually getting ready to engage consulting contracts to help with those designs. The advisory board's also going to be participating as members of the selection committee, similar to what we've also done on the previous MAPS initiatives as well. So they're going to be very engaged moving forward, not just on looking at budgets, but looking at project designs and reports that will then be presented to the city council. This is the locations of those enhancement projects, and again, these are falling in line with Plan OKC and BikeWalk as well. Sidewalk projects, again, under the city's comprehensive plan, you'll see they're in five categories, downtown parks, preferred priority areas, which are the PPAs, the school, and also the transit. You'll see different numbers of projects that have been in each of these areas. Again, looking at the map, you'll see that the focus, and we're color-coded here, the blue are the PPAs, the green are the parks, the orange are the schools, and the red are the transit. The downtown is the cross-hatched area in the center. Again, these have a really unique map that can also be provided to the council that Aubrey has presented before that just shows you what the comprehensive plan looks like for connectivity of sidewalks, showing where our existing sidewalk infrastructure is. If we were to show that map today, you will see how these are making a lot of those missing connections citywide, and so this is connecting a lot of the existing infrastructure with the new construction. Moving on to the trails projects, you'll see that the Burt Cooper Trail is number three on the line up here at 770,000. That was one that the council previously approved, but we're adding now 15 projects total, including the Burt Cooper at $10 million. There was some prioritization done by the advisory board. They're looking at 40% new trails and 60% existing rehabilitations and reconstructions as a part of the system, recognizing that a lot of the city's existing trails are in need of work, like the Burt Cooper. But moving forward, we've now got, with your recommendation and authorization today, the ability to complete this work. And this is what that map looks like. Probably not unfamiliar, looking at, again, at Lake Hefner to the north, the river corridor, but starting to extend those trails in east Oklahoma City as well. And then bike projects, obviously, this is something that's not new to Oklahoma City. We have some bike infrastructure, but we're getting ready to enhance bike infrastructure citywide, and you're going to see a number of locations here, 11 projects following BikeWalk OKC, $6.3 million. And then this map shows those locations. And again, as we're starting to look at connectivity to infrastructure, beginning the enhancement of the bicycle system in Oklahoma City, the sales tax is going to be able to address that well. So as I just wrap up today, this is an amendment to the plan. It is not the final amendment that you'll see. There's anticipated probably in about four to six months, we'll bring another amendment forward as we collect additional sales tax dollars, as additional projects are identified. Generally speaking, with this approval today, we're about 55% authorized through the program of 240 million, so there's about 45% remaining. But being almost nine months coming up on a year-end of the program, we're really just on the mark, so there's a lot of work that's underway, a lot of work to come, and I can answer any questions you might have about the plan.
Eric, just given sales tax collections generally, I assume we're running a little bit ahead of projections?
We're slightly ahead, just like the sales tax for the city, yes.
Great.
So collections have been very good.
Any other questions, comments for Eric? All right, I'd entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Eric. That brings us to 9AA1, Joint Resolution Authorizing the Municipal Counselor to Settle the Worker's Compensation Subrogation Claim, et cetera. I'm told we don't need executive session, Kenny?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9AB, Enter into Executive Session to Discuss Collective Bargaining Negotiations with AFSMI, FOP, and IAFF. We do need this, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Do we enter into executive session?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that at the conclusion of our other business. And that brings us to 9AC1, Claims Recommended for Denial. I presume we do not need executive session?
We do.
And was there one here that was, was one of these, one that was deferred?
Yes, it's D.
Okay, item D was deferred at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, I'm sorry, did we have a motion?
Move for.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak on these items? Seeing none. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10A1, Claims Recommended for Approval. I presume we do not need executive session?
Correct.
I'd entertain a motion?
Move for.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We do have some substantive items from council today under item 11, and maybe we'll start there, and then if anyone has anything else they'd like to add, we'll go around the horseshoe. But let's start with item 11A, Resolution Establishing Summary Rules for City Manager or Staff Briefings of Small Groups, et cetera, and Councilman Shadid is the author, and I'll turn it over to you.
Well, since compromise is the MO of the day, this is a compromise, I feel. Sometimes with compromise, not everybody's happy. I feel like the meetings that we have are small meetings. I'm looking back, and I don't, I don't think there would have been a detriment if the media, public, if others have been able to attend those meetings. The council issue summaries with city manager, a lot of our meetings, I just don't see the downside to that, but I know that they want, the council wants to continue with those, and so we just disagree. But a compromise would be that as Lee and Meg and I leave over the next few months, that when new councilors come in, there's a discussion about open meetings, that when we have the meetings, either, I don't, I don't think anybody would dispute that if Frances was in the meeting, the way she runs the executive session meetings, that she would keep everybody, you know, in line with the Open Meetings Act on these meetings. So I feel very comfortable with that. I know Frances won't be here forever, but that policy of having the city clerk or the municipal counselor in the meeting, I think, protects everyone, and then, and then the other issue is just that sometimes on these economic issues, you know, we'd meet privately, we'd hear the deal, and then we'd come out here, and there really wouldn't be any discussion out here, and we'd just vote. And the Open Meetings Act is very clear that it's, it wants, the spirit and purpose of it is for the entire decision-making process to be visible to the public, not just the final vote. And so to be consistent with that, and to be consistent with the Open Meetings Act wanting or to be construed liberally in favor of the public, and the act should be interpreted in such a way as to avoid establishing potential evasion loopholes, I think adding a meeting where you have a public hearing component, similar to the Pat Ryan ordinance on, or process on our ordinance, achieves that. So basically, if the city's going to sell property, like the garage or the land by the Karchmer Garage, you would just, you would just adopt the Pat Ryan policy. Introduction, public hearing, vote. Just something that we're very familiar with and is easy to understand. On the economic incentives, we have meetings at the Economic Development Trust in here, but some of those meetings are, you know, we authorize negotiation, and then they come back a month or two later with the exact same thing, we just authorize. So those meetings really don't add much, but what this would do is just, you have the initial meeting, and then you'd add one more meeting. You wouldn't have three meetings, like with the sale of property and the Pat Ryan thing for that, but just for, you just add one meeting where you'd have a chance for the public to process it for a couple of weeks and then authorize negotiation.
And then just a follow-up question, you've, two meetings to authorize negotiation, then they come back at some future date, and that's still just one meeting?
Yeah.
Under your resolution?
And that, that is just typically a formality. When we authorize, like today, we authorize a negotiation for $450,000. I'll bet you any amount that it comes back as $450,000 a month from now. I mean, it's, that meeting doesn't really mean anything, because it always comes back exactly like when we authorize negotiations. So the real meat of it, the opportunity for the public to learn about it and come here and opine, would be before you authorize a negotiation.
But the public does have the opportunity, you know, to come anytime they would choose. I mean, so when we have these meetings in the Economic Development Trust and it is published in the paper, you know, the public should be, could be informed that they certainly could come to the next meeting to talk about it, or that they could pick up the phone and call you, or call me, or, you know, have a conversation. So, you know, to say the meetings are irrelevant, I think, is not really fair.
I didn't mean to say that they're irrelevant. It's just that, like we had, you know, if you establish a process, you know, Amazon was kind of, I felt like they were heavy-handed. They were calling the mayor's office, they were calling Larry, even though it was, permits were filed and everything was out there, they were, they didn't want it getting out that there was going to be this incentive until the Friday afternoon before the public would, the public would hear about it on Friday afternoon, and then we'd vote on it on Tuesday morning. So that's one business day for the public to call us and learn about it and process it before we vote to authorize a negotiation, which basically means it's done. So if you just had that first introduction, the public hears about it on Friday afternoon, and then that next Tuesday, we introduce it. Two weeks later, you have the public hearing and the authorizing negotiation.
I have no problem. I'm just suggesting that there is really a four-meeting process in place now, so it's going to be a five-meeting process.
Just for clarification, the public didn't find out about it the Friday before it went to council. They found out about it before it went to the Economic Development Trust.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a comment, Ed. And I'm sorry, I cannot remember the details of the Amazon incentives, but didn't that first go through the economic trust?
Yeah, that's what Jim was just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's a point I want to raise. The media, the paper, and I think some other outlets, did have a, just because it's fresh on my mind, several stories about the Rural Sourcing Inc. incentives being provided. And I got zero calls. I got zero calls on Amazon. And I think the media attempts to determine what stories they run based upon what they believe the readers and consumers, their customers, have an interest in. I believe that the city, the population in general, since they voted to provide for these economic incentives, and they understand the structure that first coming out of the economic trust, have confidence in the city in providing for these incentives, and therefore, they don't necessarily have too much interest in knowing the details, that Amazon got some incentives, that Rural Sourcing Inc. has some incentives. There may be a very small group of people that really get excited about this stuff, but they have yet to contact me or provide any input. What tends to happen to me, and maybe it's just the area that I represent, are very favorable comments when a new employer comes to Oklahoma City. People recognize the importance of economic development and continued growth in jobs for the success of their city and for the continued strength of their city as well as where they live at. Without strong economic development, and certainly those who lived here during the '80s, recognize it is not a fun place to live when you can constantly see the value of your home decline year after year after year. More and more people are moving out because there's just no opportunities, more and more people are losing their jobs. That's not an area people in Ward 5 want to ever experience, and I share that concern. So I think the public has a level of confidence in us that we're going to look at these incentives. If companies that come into the city meet the criteria previously established, they're going to receive those incentives, whether they're highly successful, like Amazon is, or relatively successful, or a fairly new company. I mean, we should want to attract as successful of businesses to Oklahoma City as we can. I think this morning's company, Rural Sourcing, like I said earlier, I think, I hope that they're the starting point for new high-tech jobs, just like the one we heard about last council meeting up on North Broadway. Meg, I forgot.
Yeah, Global Payments.
Yeah, Global Payments. The more of those type of companies we can attract to Oklahoma City, it just puts us in such a stronger position to allow our younger people to stay here, get a good education, and remain in Oklahoma City. I'm all for that. I don't mind this proposal to wait another week, as long as it doesn't interfere with us offering the incentive, the company accepting it, and moving forward. I just want to make sure, from my perspective and the people of Ward 5, they do have confidence in the process that currently exists. I've never heard any concerns that there's any nefarious or back-room decisions or agreements being made, and they want a continued focus on economic development as a significant part of the city government's responsibility. Thank you.
Ed, there's one other little point I'd like to make, and that is with regard to new people coming onto the council. We are required to have training by the Oklahoma Municipal League. We are, everybody's required to have eight hours of training, and my recollection is that a fair amount of that surrounded the open meetings laws, and so this will be a double layer, there's nothing wrong with that, but I just want to point out for anybody that's listening that we do receive. that we do receive training.
Councilman McTeague.
As you all know, I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Trust, have been for a number of years. And the current way to evaluate these economic deals that come to us, I think is more than adequate, and I think it speaks to what David was speaking to. As the chairman, I have not had but a handful of people inquire concerning these things in the, it's about seven years that I've been the chairman. The system is working well. It is working better. We're beginning to get the bumps out of it so that we can process the requirements in an objective way. Councilman Todd was at his first meeting, and he can give you a newcomer's perspective of it, but from my perspective, I don't think that delay is necessary. I think the system is working, and I think we have been sending a very pro and positive message to potential companies that this is a town that is business-oriented, that we will not violate our principles, we will not violate the protocol that's been set down for evaluating the different deals when they come to us, and so, I think we ought to just leave it the way it is.
I would just say that, I mean, in a few months, I'll be a citizen, and I'll, you will be hearing from me, and so, you'll have at least one constituent that opines. But I just would need more time to figure these things out when I'm not on the council. It's easier for me here, obviously, because I, but for me to hear about something while in the middle of my work, other work, and process it, and I think if you go on sites like OKCTalk, you'll see that there are a lot of people that debate and care about these things. Now, they may not be coming to the meeting, they may not be calling or emailing individual counselors, but part of that might be because they feel like it's hopeless, and they wouldn't really be able to impact it. But there are a number of people in Oklahoma City that do care about these things and debate them regularly, all day long, every day. So, I just know that as a future citizen who will be very interested in these things, an extra two weeks would be a tremendous help.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'd like to point out, and that is that Kenny and Amanda spent a tremendous amount of time on this, and I wanted to thank you all for all the hard work you did on it, first of all. And second of all, the one thing that we discussed throughout, that if there is something that needs to be decided quickly, we still can put an emergency tag on it and keep it moving forward.
Yes, what would be the mechanics of that if there was some situation where...
It's a resolution. It's basically a policy resolution adopted by council, so you can, anytime you could waive it if necessary.
So, if you, you'd actually have a vote to waive the resolution, then you would proceed to the vote on the...
Yes. Potentially, you can do the same thing with the Ryan Resolution if you want to, but...
Which we did on the scooters, didn't we? What was that?
That, you did that on the scooters.
On the first, on the, yes.
You adopted...
There was like a superact. You needed a, did you need a supermajority for that?
Yes, you needed seven votes for that.
And why, that wasn't related to overruling the Ryan Resolution, though? The supermajority was necessary to make it take effect immediately.
The Ryan Resolution says if it's an emergency ordinance, then it doesn't apply.
I got it.
But this is a resolution which would not take...
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
I think in the spirit of these resolutions, we should vote on it next meeting.
It does seem somewhat ironic, Councilman Shadid, that we're only doing this at one meeting with no one in the chamber.
No additional...
At 12:46.
Thank you, James.
Okay. All right, well, any further comments or questions on, we've sort of, kind of, really kind of been hitting on two, both resolutions, I suppose. It doesn't seem as if we sell a lot of real estate. That does not, that has not happened a lot since I've been here, maybe a couple...
Not often.
Okay. Do you, Jim, in your experience, do you see, we talked mostly about economic development, do you see three meetings for the sale of real estate? Can you think of situations where that would have posed a practical problem?
You can't, you know, obviously, there was some urgency on the Santa Fe Garage.
Right.
Councilman Shadid took some exception to that. You know, there were four meetings on the Santa Fe Garage. There was one at COPDA, one at the council, and then for the memorandum of understanding that lined out the terms, and then the final execution, there was a meeting at COPDA and a meeting of council to consummate that. So, there was public debate on that, and, but we do sell property rarely, but sometimes there's emergency, and so, we may have to, we may have to do some things. I can't predict what that might be, but there was a few weeks ago, and I believe it was real.
Right, okay. Okay. Well...
I think as long as we're given the maximum flexibility, if these could be sped up, if they needed to be, or they provide for deferral, if, you know, a council member proposes so and gets the votes to defer. So, you know, I don't think we're at giant risk either way.
Mm-hmm, okay.
One of the things that I think would be a concern of mine is that you're also talking about a new city manager who will be coming in, and whether or not that person has the level of trust, I don't, I think, you're talking about big shoes here, that the involvement in community response and input is crucially important, and I'm not certain that the person coming in will still have the same level of public trust.
Hmm, okay. Well, what will we do with item 11A? I would think you would move it. Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second on 11A. Is there any further discussion?
Excuse me, clarification on the motion?
Yes. This is to adopt 11A, the resolution establishing the rules for small group meetings and a two-public-meeting requirement for economic development. Right. Okay, 11A, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes seven to one. Okay? And then, 11B?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second on 11B, and this is in regards to a three-public-meeting schedule for the sale of real estate, or real property, I should say. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes seven to one. Okay. We will now go around the horseshoe. Councilman Stonecypher, how about we start with you?
Nothing today other than to say thank you for such a short meeting.
You know, I have some sympathy for those who want to have some night meetings, and I'd like to experiment with that maybe at some point, but it would, I do the math during these meetings, and I realize it would be like 11:00 PM right now if we did that. Okay.
Not until after April. Nothing for me, except not until after April. No experimenting with this night thing.
Councilman Greenwell?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Hats off to a number of neighborhoods who had great neighborhood night out last week, and to the support people from police and fire who came to support them. The neighbors really liked it, and my congratulations, and thanks for the effort that they put in. Thank you, Your Honor.
Another compromise, David declaring a proclamation, I guess, for Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 8th. I know, I think time will sort that out, and it won't be a big deal one day, but it's a big deal today, and I'm very grateful, super grateful, and I know a lot of other people are as well. So, thank you for that.
Sure, thank you. Okay, city manager reports, item 12. You have A, B, and C.
We'll do A, because of time we put off to a future date. I just do want to highlight item B just for a second. It's the sales tax report. The sales tax for the year is strong. We had growth projected, and we're beating that growth year-to-date by about 2%. So, that's very positive. But the real news is if you go to the use tax, and if you go to the use tax, we're up year-to-date 25%. We were up for this month 47% on use tax, which is crazy numbers, and the reason we are is because of the collection of third-party vendors that are now remitting. So, that's very positive, and that's the changes, and it isn't one thing. It's because Amazon now has Nexus here, it's because the state, the state passed laws that said third-party vendors through Amazon now have to pay sales tax. It's the South Dakota Supreme Court ruling that came down, that it's, and we can't tell you what parts are from which area, but that is the result, and it is right there in the use tax, so...
Jim, just real quick, more and more companies are voluntarily making that, out-of-state companies, not just Oklahoma, but throughout the country, in anticipation of future statute changes with respect to the various states, and so, even though they may not have to at this time, we're just seeing more and more companies voluntarily paying that use tax. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And information about claims and payroll can be found on our website under this agenda at OKC.gov, and we do have a couple citizens who've signed up to be heard. Jim Snoddy? And if Joanna Smith wants to go ahead and get ready, you'll be next.
I'll be quick. My name's Jim Snoddy. My address is 4127 Northwest 122nd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I just wanted to come down and personally thank the council, all the members, and all the participants in this great hall that we have here for your all's help with stopping the Lamar billboard on Hefner Parkway. I really appreciate it. That's all I've got to say, but let's do be vigilant, because I'm concerned with a big gorilla like that telling what they'll do, in my opinion. So, I hope that Oklahoma City staff, that being the sign permit and the ODOT work together from this point forward, because I think they dropped the ball. Thank you all very much for everything you do.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you. Joanna, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address as well.
I'm Joanna Smith, and my address is 11500 North Portland, and I, too, want to be quick with my words. I appreciate the fact I'm in the business of teaching individuals how to listen, and you listened well, and I am most appreciative of that. We are very pleased that the ODOT ruled it the way that they did. Again, I would just echo, my concern is, I am very diligent about looking out every day to make sure the trees are still there and there is no billboard. I want to make sure that that is the case for many years to come after I'm gone, but thank you. I cannot thank you enough for your efforts on this. Appreciate you.
Thank you for both coming. Thank you. We have executive session. We will go do that, and then we will return.